Oh my.
Never.
Minutes from last meeting show time here. I'll try to.
I don't care.
Okay.
Oh, it does. I'm so sorry.
It's alright.
Did they bring the rain with them? Tell them that was warm in.
It's very.
Gee, where are they coming from?
Do I need to bring that up?
Okay, yes, they're getting plenty of rain up there. I just need a break.
Yeah.
That's where our country says change the rain for Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Okay, yeah, they're getting a lot of rain up there too. Oh yeah, they're getting a lot of rain there too. Everybody getting rain but us. Yeah, I talked to my parents yesterday and they're like, we're so sick of the rain. I'm like, yeah, but you were supposed to send that our way. You're supposed to share. And they go, we tried, but we hit the Texas Louisiana wall.
So our baseball team is still playing. Deep the losing end.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes.
This was supposed to be their Texas.
Ah, okay.
Apparently flying out of Montreal right now. They have. Their flight was canceled.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah. Montreal, yeah. Yeah, I've got cousins living there. Yeah, I got, I got two cousins living there and they go. Mm-hmm.
Just stacks.
Yeah. Yeah. Hi.
Hey, how's it going?
We said, we said since you were the last one.
How are you doing?
We said since you were the last one, you'd have to buy the round of drinks.
Yeah, so they were gonna come here and my sister organized. She she rented the.
Okay. Oh, wow. Full scene, didn't they?
Yeah, I remember too. All these.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was gonna be alright.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I know you could. That's why my mom wasn't able to go home. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I've been asking you what I need for three months and nobody told me I needed that.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean. That Newfoundland, it's still, it's the island. If you're not, if you don't live on the island, you ain't going nowhere. Oh, yeah. 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 Oh, yes, very much so. Well, it's less populous, so. What did you do?
Two things.
Ah.
Is it on the web?
Oh, yeah.
It's on your web?
Get the, get the word, Joe, the word.
You only pull that? Do you?
Oh, yeah, pressure.
You were saying.
Yeah, it's pressure. Yeah, get the work and that helps too, put it at the base of the.
He maybe.
Did you try the Ortel?
That first, right?
Malphite? No, but it'll numb the area. Yeah, they've got a. Yeah, Wally World, they've got Ortel. Malphite. It'll numb the area and everything. That's what I'm talking about. So we hear a. Here, we got the. Oh, my.
Oh, I'm trying to mark the thing.
DQ, mayor, Texas talk.
The recording's going.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. So we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:30. While I get organized. One thing I want to remind council, please, if you can grab your microphones, keep them close to your mouth. I noticed that the last recording, it was kind of hard to hear us, so please just be diligent with that.
Gotcha.
There you go, look at that. All right. So we're gonna start with a roll call.
Gina Martinez, District One.
Okay, for District Two.
Philip King, District Three.
Harold Stein, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. And then going forward, we're gonna do that a little bit differently. Deborah will call it out. I think it'll just. You'll see next to it.
Do this randomly.
Yep, we'll do that next time. Okay, thank you.
Make sure you're here.
Make sure you're all here. All right, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for our invocation. And we have Pastor Matt Gutierrez from Discover Church.
Let's bow our heads as we pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and most of all, your grace. It's by your grace that we are saved through faith and we, that we profess in you and we're thankful for that. Today, we lift up our city leaders in this room. They have accepted a calling to serve this community and we ask that in this meeting, you will uphold them with truth and wisdom. Allow them to feel the needs of our community, to stand up for what is right and just. Bring confidence, Lord, to every single decision that's made. We thank you, heavenly Father, for this meeting and for those that are here in attendance, that you will speak to them, that you'll carry them, and that you will order this business, Father, in your name. We call on you to bless every single person here and it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please be seated. All right, next item, we have citizens' comments. Would anybody like to speak for citizens' comments? All right. Let me get this hooked up real quick. Are the TVs on? I think that helps. Heard somewhere. All right, who wants to sing the? The music? All right. So you'll notice the new format. Thank you, Darren Hamm, for putting this together. Oh. Oh, I am sorry, thank you. Phil is keeping me in line, good mayor pro temp. Okay, next item is consent agenda. We have two items on here and I know that Harold had an issue with one of them. So the items on here, minutes for July 12, 2022, City Council meeting and quarterly financials and investment reports. And Harold, do you have a change?
Yeah, minutes from July 12, I'd like the roll call to reflect the.
You got Todd. I'm sorry.
Poor Todd, we keep trying to bring poor Todd back. He's like, no. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Carey and a second by Councilwoman Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Okay, so can I do this now? Thank you. I have to get permission. So this is Darren Hamm's new presentation format. He's been doing a ton of work. You're gonna see some of the stuff that he's doing coming up here in a little bit. So I'm gonna start with this. We're gonna talk about updates on the Uniform Development Ordinance, the UDO. We're gonna talk through some sales tax details. There's a lot of details in here. It's charts and graphs and kind of fun. A little bit on the budget summary and then talking about some of the federal funding that we pursued. So on the UDO process, on each one of these, I just put the key takeaways, the things you should be looking for in this. One, the past should guide our future. So we need to look at what, where we've come from as we look at how we should continue to grow to honor the heritage that was, was given to us by the founding families. The next key takeaway, our journey begins next month. We'll talk about what that looks like. And then the other key takeaways, I want to make sure that people understand we're, through this process, we're prioritizing development that's coming from the east. So this is the new development, the, the good farmland that's getting covered up, but we're not neglecting the other priorities. So this is the series that we've been talking about. You'll start seeing advertisements for this coming out probably within the next 24 to 48 hours. We've got a group of people that are just outstanding, world-class people, talking to us about how do we leverage our past to, to help us, help guide us into the future. The good news is that I realized that Castleville is not growing. It's nice, right? But it's San Antonio that's growing from Castleville. And so we're trying to keep the growth that's happening to be an expansion of Castleville, something that the founding families would recognize and appreciate rather than the seas of homes and miles of concrete and asphalt. So we're trying to do it a better way. We're trying to not become, if you think about Petrenko Ranch, or not Petrenko Ranch, but Petrenko Road, you've got all of the, just miles of cars backed up to each other, all of the businesses just next to each other. And then if you look back behind them, there's rows and rows of houses. You can't even go get a soda without getting in your car and driving five, 10, 15, 20 minutes, depending on how much traffic. So we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. So these people will help us through. Again, more details coming out. Look for it in your utility bills. You'll have it there. It'll be on social media, on the city's website. And these people are absolutely outstanding. We talked about it before. Steve Uber is a, a city planner that has designed many walkable communities that keep things close, community-oriented, like we, like we have experienced. Catherine O'Rourke, she's actually a, she is from Trinity University and she specializes in vernacular architecture and, and basically she'll, she'll talk through what a vernacular architecture is and how do we honor that going forward without cheaply replicating it, duplicating it and creating a bunch of copies of it? But how do you, how do you do something that just, that honors it? Then Vince Michael, he is the Executive Director for the San Antonio Conservation Society. This is done in partnership with the Castleville Conservation Society in an effort to preserve our heritage and honor that. He's gonna talk us through, what does that look like? He's experienced goodness and not-so-goodness in the San Antonio area and truly across the globe. He's had a lot of experience with this. And then finally, John Anderson's gonna come in, talk about, basically, how do we take this from concept to completion? So he, he's actually gonna come out for an entire day. He's gonna walk through this. The ultimate conclusion of this series is that council will then go with Planning and Zoning Council, our city planner, is actually gonna go and create the ordinances that will allow us to do things our way, the way that Castleville wants this. And we are inviting the entire community because this cannot be a mayor initiative. It can't be a mayor and city council initiative. This needs to be a community initiative where we are all aligned. So if I go away or if council turns, turns over, the next elected officials will know that this is the will of the community. So it's really bringing everybody together on that. So the priorities, the way that, that I'm approaching it right now, and this is subject to change as, as the winds of change happen, but it's really concentrating on the new development projects, the big development that's coming from the east. Next, it's the infill and the rebuilds. If you think about some lost opportunities when things are torn down, rebuilt, there have been a couple of examples of this fairly recently and they're rebuilt without honoring the vernacular. They're rebuilt in, in the modern way. And so it's trying to, it's trying to help guide people through that. We're actually meeting up with, with one of them that we'll be very, very happy to have back when they repair their, their burned-out roof and, and bring that back. And they've been great partners in working with us on this. And then the infill, what I mean by infill is the empty lots that are between the homes. So as people come through, just making sure that what's happening honors. We've had lots of discussion from the pre-engineered homes to large homes on little lots to all kinds of different things. So it's, it's looking at that infill. And what should that look like? What could that look like? And what do people want that to look like? So it's much more on the change, the new. It's not on looking at people's homes, the ones that they already have. It's really not looking to limit any of that. And then finally, how do we repair the, the scar that runs through the middle of town, Highway 90? How do we look at making slight improvements? What is possible if we, if we come together as a collective? What are some things? And this is something that John's gonna, to go over just briefly about Strode's. What could you accomplish if we're able to get the northern route done? And what does that look like? So the accumulation again is the Unified Development Ordinance for new developments. All right, next, all the fun and really boring things, but I like these. Okay, so there's a lot of information. I'm gonna walk you through it. Some of the numbers are not big enough, I apologize, but I think that you'll get the idea as we walk through it. So the, the set of bars on the bottom is the fiscal year '21. The top, the orange, the top bar on that one is the fiscal year total revenue. That is the audited revenue of just over $1.3 million, 1.359. And then looking at the performance, our fiscal year is October, begins in October. So the October through May performance, the actual performance, was $878,000. So as we go from actual revenue to budgeted revenue, staff did a really good job of this. Typically, you try and hit it about where you were last year, expecting that there's gonna be growth and, and their number, their estimation was really, really close. It was just barely over what we had actually brought in. So our budget for this fiscal year is 1.364 million. And our performance through May is actually, what is that? It's $100,000 ahead of where we were last year. So our budget is the same as the actual from last year. Our current performance is $100,000 already through May. So we expect to finish very, very strong this year again. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of talk you through this. This is, if you look at the entire year, month-by-month revenue, what's coming in through sales tax? Again, this is all sales tax, starting last October through, the numbers that I have here are decently accurate through June. That's not a full June. I took that about, about midway through, so it's actually higher than that. But then I estimated what the, what the next three months would look like. So those are the bars. Actuals are the dark green, the very light green that you can barely see on the right-hand side. That is the estimation based on past performance. And the line that goes across is what our budget is. So with that budget, I took the full year and, and I'll walk you through kind of how I, how I came up with that number. This is a little bit busier. So if you look at the clumps, the clumps are the months. So October through September. And the, the bars that are inside of each one of those clumps, they start from FY '17 and go all the way through FY '22. If you'll notice, again, the last three months are, you can barely see them, the, the light green because they're estimated on the right-hand side. But what I did to do those estimations was took the entire year and the percentage of October, the percentage of the total performance in October divided by the whole year gave us the percentage for that month. And so taking the average performance percentage-wise from each one of the months, that's, that's how I came up with the, with the other. And that's how I also took the entire budget and broke that out into months. And so you'll see that it's pretty accurate when you look at it like this. So some of the trends that you'll see here is, it is a, it's a gradual, sometimes dramatic increase. You'll notice that every single month, we are significantly above what our actual budget is. So the, the takeaway from this one is really that we are performing very, very well and it continues to get better. So this is the sales trend over the last five years. You notice we had a pretty good bump there in FY '18. There was some major retailer that, that came in and gave us a nice little bump right there in fiscal year '18. And then it dropped off just a little bit as you go to, in terms of the total percentage of increase. But again, the trend is starting to go up and up. The next one, we look at, this is fiscal year, so this is basically a 10-year look, a little bit over. Don't really pay atten, the line just shows our velocity, but I don't want to get into that. That gets too confusing. But if you look at the general trend of what's happening here, the sales tax revenue, it's not just a gradual, like a, it's not a straight-line increase. That line is curving up. That means that each year, we're getting better and we're getting better. And especially if you look at the last couple of years, we're starting to really gain some momentum there. And so again, we're fiscally very, very strong in this. So I wanted to take it a step further and I wanted to break it down by business. So thank you to Scott and Leroy. Our staff has done a great job of giving some really good tools to start looking at this. I went over this with the, the EDC and Arnie, I'm gonna get that out to you guys. I, I did some tweaks to, to refine some of the numbers. But our, our key takeaways from this. So when you look at all of the businesses, the top six performing businesses produce over 50% of the sales tax revenue. Six businesses, half of our sales tax revenue. The next 50 businesses produce nearly 40% of our sales tax revenue. So when you take our entire sales tax revenue for the year, 56 businesses bring in 90% of the funds. The final, less than 10% of sales tax revenue was generated by the remainder, which is over 2,000 local and online businesses. The top 56 of those with sales tax revenues over $1,000 each are a little under half and the ones over $1,000 are about half as well. So I wanted to show this kind of graphically. And to describe, this was actually really interesting to me. So when you look at the top six, we can't talk about the business names, but you can say, so number one was 23.2% a large retailer, another large retailer, 5.6% online businesses. So online business through, especially through very popular online ordering services, represented 7% of our overall revenue. It's kind of interesting that when you order something from your online things, we actually get the sales tax revenue here, so keep on ordering. Thank you. The thing that was really surprising to me is that two of our top six are fast food. That was very surprising to me. And then when we look at the next 50, again, that's 50 businesses, almost 40% of it, and then everybody else, less than 10. So this one, I put this up here so that you can see the next 50 businesses by total performance. Don't worry about the, the numbers, but look at the, the bars. So when you start at the bottom with the, the ones that are performing a lot, fast food is definitely up at the top. Dining is up at the top. Beer, wine and liquor is up at the top. People sure like their Alsatian wine. Construction supply, more fast food, pizza, there's some chain retail, gas stations, dining, dining. So these are the types of businesses that are, that are generating the most revenue. Now, taking that, how does tourism impact us? So your key takeaways from this is, and I've got some charts that'll show this, some graphs that, that show this a little bit more visually. Sales tax is about 44% of the general fund budget. So the general fund budget, if you remember, it funds police, streets, parks, staff. So it's 40, almost half of that is sales tax. Tourism has an, an impact on about three-quarters of that 44%. Again, I'll show you the graphs that will demonstrate this more graphically. Tourism has a direct impact on almost a third of the entire general fund budget and an indirect impact on almost a quarter. Again, I'll show you what that means. If you look at citizen contribution to sales and property tax, so the people that live here that are paying property tax, you know, we're mostly shopping in town. But even with all of that, the local citizens, we only contribute about a quarter of the general fund revenue. Everything else comes from other sources. So when you look at the top 56 businesses, these are all of the businesses by the relative amount that they bring in. And so what I did is I took out, so in here, things like construction supply is not affected by tourism. Cell phone is not affected by tourism. Utility is not. So a lot of these things aren't really affected by, by tourism. But these, and some are, are impacted more than others. But when people come in that are from out of town, the spending is in retail. It's in fast food, dining. Auto sales is kind of questionable, but the, the probability is that at least, you know, a certain number of those people are actually gonna come back and buy autos here. Gas stations, auto parts, beer, wine, liquor, chain retail, small retail, pizza, specialty food. So all of those, when people come into town to go to our events, to join with the Alsatian Festival, to go to the park, they're actually spending money here. So this one I like. This is, when you look at our entire annual, this is our entire general fund annual budget. When you look at, so let's start with property, the blue, top right says property taxes residential. That's what I was talking about. That's only 13% of the general fund budget comes from our property tax. With that, you have a lot of people that have exemptions from military disabled to over 65 to other homestead exemptions. So there's a lot of exemptions, even though our property value is, is pretty significant, there's a lot of exemptions that keep that from being a bigger number. And I think that those are justifiable in, in the exemptions that we give. I think that each one of those is, is a solid decision. The property taxes on businesses, they don't get those exemptions. So while the total dollar amount of businesses' property value is, is relatively the same, I don't remember the exact percentage, 23% of our budget comes from the property tax from businesses. That's almost a quarter of our, our general fund revenue comes from the property tax from the businesses. So when people come in and they fix up the businesses, they, the downtown renovation, as they come in, they make these buildings more valuable. They don't get exemptions on these buildings. So there, every one of those continues to, to increase that. And as Alsatian Oaks builds out with some of their, some of their commercial, as Enduro starts building up with some of their commercial, you're gonna see that percentage probably, well, the dollar amount will definitely go, grow and you'll start to see the slider between property tax from businesses and sales tax. It'll probably ebb and flow as they get built and as they start bringing in, depending on how many of them are collecting sales tax. So then the green on the bottom, the biggest chunk of our, of our general fund revenue actually comes from sales taxes that are impacted by tourism. So this is why when we discussed bringing on our Director of Tourism and Business Development, it is really specifically because we can have such a great impact. The more that we can derive, the more we can help our businesses. It helps them, we're being good partners and it creates better amenities, more police coverage, more, better roads. All of the stuff that we enjoy, the more that we support the businesses, it actually helps us residents out tremendously. the businesses, it actually helps us residents out tremendously. And then you have just the eleven percent that is, it's not really impacted by, by tourism. So how are we going to leverage this information? How do we actually make that actionable? So this is a tool off of our online tool that, that we're using to track a lot of this stuff. So if you look at these graphs, that lighter portion on the bottom is out of, they're remote, they're non-local sales tax revenue. The green at the top, that's us. That's the people, I think that that is the seven-eight-zero-zero-nine, so it's not just citizens of Castro, I think it's everybody in seven-eight-zero-zero-nine. So it is a little bit of the surrounding community, and it's right now about fifty-fifty. So we're going to be tracking that. So that green item, if we are as successful as I believe that we will be, that green item will creep up. It'll start becoming a greater percentage, and you'll see it month by month, and you'll see it tracked to events that we're doing, special promotions that we're doing, you'll be able to see that actually tracked year over year. So that's how we're going to be paying attention to this. I believe that it is imperative that when we make commitments for investments, that we can actually track those investments to their completion. Okay, next item, budget summary. So my intent was to put together a beautiful budget summary, but honestly, it's something that I've been working with, with staff on, creating some, some more of these graphs that really show the relations between what our budgeted amount is, what our actual current amount is, and any shortcomings on a month-by-month basis. I think it gives us a much better picture of what our overall health will be. So you'll see some changes coming up. They weren't implemented this time around, but you'll see more graphs similar to what I was showing before. Okay, finally, so federal funding. We took a trip to Washington DC last week, and we were, I'll pull it over here. So really, the, the intent for this trip is, if you're not familiar with it, the bipartisan infrastructure law, I wanted to write that number out completely because it's a lot of zeros. It's a hundred and eight billion dollars. And if you look over the past century or so, you'll see different times when our federal government felt it was prudent to start making infrastructure investments. And this is one of those times. There's been a number of times throughout, through our, throughout our short country's history that the government has put forth these, these infrastructure bills and really invested into it. So we're going to capture as much as we, as we possibly can. We met up with different agencies, so these are the agencies that we met up with, still working on further communication with the US Department of Transportation, with FEMA, with the VA, the Small Business Administration, and there's actually a lot of good tie-ins between VA and SBA, the Department of Justice, USDA, and US Army Corps of Engineers. So all in all, we're, we're seeking somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten million dollars. Again, let's go back and look at our entire general fund budget per year is about four million, and so we're trying to capture multiple times that. And I think that based on a lot of the planning that we're putting in pa-, in place, it's going to set us up for success in, in capturing a good amount of that money. We are partnered really well with Tony Gonzalez's, with, with him, with his staff. They're a great proponent of us, they're trying to help us as much as, obviously, they've got a very, very big area to cover, so they've been great partners in helping guide us through this and helping support us. They'd helped us with a grant that was direly needed over at the airport. They did a great fast turnaround on that, so they've proven to be great supporters of us. And part of what we're, you may have read in the paper, in the Divine News, it said that the county is looking at spending eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on an engineering study, and I wanted to make sure that I cleared that up. It's not a study, it is the actual engineering. The reason that we're looking at doing this in partnership with, well, the county is looking at doing this in partnership with us and the developers, because doing that engineering, that will actually give us the construction of the road that goes from Victory Lane up to four-seventy-one, what we're calling the Northern Round. In doing that, and we're still figuring out how that's going to get paid for, the split between the developers and, and the city and the county, but we're, we're working on that constantly. But because we're doing that, it actually sets us up for that federal funding incredibly well. And while I'm on that, just a quick side note, if you saw in the Anvil, there was a slight misprint. They said that, that my comment was that we're trying to reroute city traffic through Country Village. It is to reroute traffic so they don't have to go through Country Village. So if you, if you didn't catch that, take a look at it, that was a misprint, and I know that they didn't mean to do that, so just to make, make it clear, we don't want to put the Northern Round through Country Village, right by your house. And your church, yeah, there you go. Well, that might be good for you, though. All right, so that's what I've got. And with that, I'm going to hand this back over, if you don't mind. So the next item is discussion on FY twenty-two budget revenues and expenditures, the CIP and proposed draft for FY twenty-three.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Well, if anybody wanted to see what the Calvary's doing on their thoroughfare planning, I've got a copy of it here.
So this is the third budget workshop, and this one's only going to really focus on two main areas. Arnie?
Can I just point out that I'm an early adopter? I've already incorporated Darren Hamm's new design into the, the presentation.
You're phenomenal.
I've just thrown that out there.
You're phenomenal. So this is our third budget workshop. We're not going to rehash what we went over with general fund and utility fund. Those are available to you, and when I conclude this presentation, I'm going to show you where you can find those on our team's site. So the two things that we're really going to go over, for the most part, we're going to review the CIP, and this is really just a review to kind of get your minds, you, you, again, we've kind of gone through the general fund, we've gone through the utility fund. Now, I want you to start thinking about the CIP discussion that will be happening in the fall. And in order to do that, I wanted to show you kind of where we stand right now. The CIP, an acronym for Community Investment Plan or Capital Improvement Plan, it's, it's same letters, basically the same meaning. And then we're also going to review the adopted versus year-to-date on our tourism business development expenditures. And we'll look at the debt service funds, and we'll also talk about the hearing dates. That's a separate agenda item on this same agenda. First, just to kind of go through CIP, there's several of these pages. If I move too fast, just, just have me slow down. So what this is, this is, what this represents is the adopted CIP, and this is just this year. Now, keep in mind, the, the CIP is a five-year living document. What that means is that things, the amounts change. It's only partially funded, so we funded most of the first two years, depending on the type of project. The general fund, for instance, we borrowed about five million dollars, and that was intended to pay for the first two years of, of the general fund-related items. And the utility fund, however, we, we borrowed five million, and that was really only intended to pay for the first year, with the intention to issue additional debt in the subsequent six years, at, at an average rate of six million dollars. And we're going to have a discussion with our financial advisor, this will be part of the CIP planning session, it's going to happen later in the fall, where we'll review exactly how much we can borrow, because obviously with the increase in interest rates, that's going to impact how much we can borrow, how much we can afford to borrow. Unfortunately, at the same time, we're also being hit with increases, price increases for supplies and construction, et cetera. So that's also going to impact how much we actually get done physically on the ground with the monies that we borrow. So again, this is just an update where we are on the library. The kiosk, installation of the kiosk and creating that drive-through, those who've driven by it, you can see, that is winding down. The kiosk should be installed this week, and I would imagine that within the next two weeks, we'll actually be ready to, to make that go live, as it were. We need to do some staff training around that, but that'll be a finished project within the next two weeks. Public safety building, this is really the roof repair. That is something that's going to be talked about tonight. I don't think it's on the agenda for approval, but when we created the CIP, we were aware that the, there were some facility needs at the PD, and that's what that money is, and none of that's been spent yet. City hall renovation, there wasn't a specific thing that we thought of, we just know that the city hall has needs, and so we plugged some money in there on the CIP. Animal control, as you recall, this is something we approved. We have spent the twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that is all we're going to spend at this stage. We've done all the things that you all had, had identified, and the staff had identified, so those improvements have been made, and we have a little bit of money left over from there. Steinbach House, once again, we knew that there's some need out there that has not been addressed yet. Mainly, it's the tile roof, and Deborah can speak to the fact that depending on the, the rain, now recognizing we haven't had any of that recently, but even that short rain event we had the other day, depending on which way it's blowing, it can cause a real issue for the Steinbach house. Again, it's a house that was built in the, originally built in sixteen hundreds, so yeah, it's not necessarily designed with Texas weather in mind, but, so we know we need to make some improvements there. Emergency management, again, that was just kind of a filler, we had put some money in to address emergency management needs. Now, some of that, you could, for instance, the radio discussion we're having with the PD, well, we might call that, even those for the PD, PD is our first responder for all intents and purposes, we might call that an emergency management expense, and those are capitalized items, and that's generally what is on this list, are items that can be capitalized, that an auditor would say that you need to capitalize and recognize the value of. The downtown redevelopment, again, we plugged in some money there. That was for a engineering and design of a redevelopment of downtown. We have not engaged an engineer to do that work, but that's what that amount was for originally. The GIS system, happily, that's cost us a whole lot less than we anticipated. We've put in two-hundred-and-fifty thousand because that was my experience, and again, we had talked about spending, you know, the need to spend maybe even much more than that at one point, but the level of design and what we're looking at doing for the public-facing GIS system that we've built thus far, it's, it's a lot less expensive than we originally anticipated. So that's excess money that we're going to look at reallocating, repurposing when we revisit the CIP. The Lions Park, you've seen those things come forward when our Parks Director Devon has, Devon Fredrickson has made those presentations. So we've got fifty-four thousand spent and a hundred and four already encumbered, meaning we've placed orders. Most of that has to do with the splash pad and restroom that is going out there. And again, these are all the general fund-related items. Regional Park, of course, that's the lighting system, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, a little bit less than what we anticipated. September Square, that lighting is going in with the next couple of weeks. It's in, just kidding. I need to drive her there at night and see it.
She looks beautiful.
I drove by, right by it last night, so I did, I was... What's that? Oh, good, all right. Well, that's, I didn't, as I said, I drove in last, late last night, I didn't notice, but, so I'll have to go check that out. But so those lights are in, that's what that represents is that was placed. Street overlay and maintenance, this was really, one of the things that we will probably bring back and talk about is some equipment purchase. One of the things we're, we're looking into right now is the, is a bobcat getting a newer, maybe heavier-duty bobcat to do some of the things that we've talked about maybe doing with the streets. Getting a more utili-, a, a all-purpose utility vehicle, that would do multiple things that won't sit idle most of the year, that actually get used most of the year, as opposed to something like the street zipper where it's going to take, it'll only be used certain months out of the year. So we'll probably bring that back, and, and that's where that money will go. As of yet, the twenty, the twenty-one thousand roughly is just for materials for street repair, that's where, where that went. And then street replacement, of course, we have, the one project that's been completed, and we had the county project that was done, that's what that money is. The remainder, we're in the process of engineering and developing the, the street replacement plan. Most of the first streets that will get done will be the ones in the Country Village subdivision. Harold had nothing to do with that, that was all decided before he came on.
We'll give him credit for it, though.
But he can take credit if he likes, but I just didn't want people to think we're playing favors. So that's, that's in the works and will likely be spent by the end of the year. So even, even though there's a lot of money that's been unspent, I fully anticipate we'll spend that and maybe plus a little bit more. Vehicle equipment replacement, you'll see there's thirty-nine thousand that's still not used. That is representative of a police vehicle that was ordered but has not shown up yet. It's a Tahoe, and we're actually, it was ordered, I think, two, two years ago? Anyway, it's, it's been on the books for a while, and we still haven't taken delivery of it. So let's figure out what we're going to do about that. And then the EMC, that's our grant consultant that's helping us go find some money, so that's what that is. And you'll see that, that we're, we're splitting that cost between general fund and utilities, and you'll see it's fifty-fifty, half of it's over here and half of it's here. So that's the general fund expenditures, that's just kind of year-to-date and encumbrances, and this only shows you twenty-twenty-two. You'd get a more holistic picture if we looked at all the years together. This is utility fund, so the Smart Meter Program. So for instance, the, what we anticipate spending in this year of this project, the Smart Meter Program, we knew that was going to be a multi-year project, and the actual total budget shows a balance of, of negative one-point-six, but the total, total budget for this program is two-point-eight million. So what you're not seeing in this chart is that in year one, we had budgeted a million, and in year two, we'd budgeted one-point-four million, and in year three, we had budgeted four-hundred thousand. And that's just a best guess when we started this, when we adopted the CIP, of how the money would be spent. And you can see, we're not too far off as far as year-to-date, we've spent four-hundred thousand. We do have a massive supply chain issue when it comes to this project, both this one and the Riverbluff, Riverbluff Electrical Project, as you'll see in a minute. We placed all the stuff on order, and I, you know, over this, this past weekend, I was with my family, my brother does, he told me, I don't do logistics anymore, I've done that for ten years, but then he describes a job, and I was like, well, I'd kind of qualify that as logistics. But anyway, he's in international sales and logistics for a freezer manufacturer that manufactures freezers for, freezers and cooling things for a large retail like Walmart and other grocery stores. And he's been doing that for, like I said, at least ten years, and their lead time to their customers for what they, the product they manufacture is sixty-two weeks. And it just boils down to, again, supply chain-related issues. So I, I know it's been felt in many industries and many places around the world, but we are, and unfortunately, we have not been immune from that. So about four-hundred thousand spent on that project, vehicle and equipment replacement. We have spent three-hundred-and-fifty-nine of the four-fourty-six. The eighty-seven that's left over is from two sources. One is, we still have a vehicle that we anticipate needing to purchase, or actually, I'm sorry, we have a, a vehicle that was ordered that hasn't been delivered, it's a pickup. And then the other is just cost savings. We had two pickups we purchased that we had budgeted, I want to say we saved about twenty to thirty thousand dollars, just through staff's efforts to find the best deal, which is great.
Thanks.
So that's going to, we're going to have a little bit left over from that, but, but not eighty-seven, probably be like thirty thousand that's left. And then that miscellaneous expense, that's that grant consultant I mentioned earlier. TC coupons, this is, this represents engineering, and this is not the full amount, and I forgot to make in a note of how much we actually originally budgeted. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I didn't. It was three-point-three million. So in total, on TC coupon, of pawns, we anticipate spending about three-point-three. We'll see what that shakes out to be, but so far, we spent about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on engineering. Bed and bank, same story there. The amount that you see spent is just the amount with the engineer to follow that paperwork, et cetera, and we do anticipate spending the rest of that money, maybe by the end of the year. Wastewater treatment plant improvements, these are holdovers from when the plant was developed. There's some things that were never done, that were planned and had them in big stores and some other things, that's what that money is. None of that's been taken care of yet, so we still have to take care of that. The CCTV cleaning efforts, you'll see we had budgeted a hundred thousand, we've actually already spent and encumbered a little bit more than that, so we underestimated how much we thought that was, was going to cost. This will be something that the city does, as you know, in the, in the CIP on an ongoing basis, every year, we're going to be looking at our sewer system until we feel like we have everything camera that needs to be camera. So that's where we actually send a camera down in the line to look at what's the condition of these fifty-year-old sewer pipes. And the good news is that so far, the information we're getting back is our sewer lines, most of, most of them are actually in pretty good shape. So that's, that's been very helpful to be able to do that. Lift station repairs, we actually have an item on tonight's agenda, we had budgeted seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. That was just for this year. Let me see if I can get it. But there's additional, some additional monies planned in the next two years for lift stations. You'll see the engineering alone for this, and another project that's not on the CIP when we first developed it, we didn't know about optimizing... when we first developed it, we didn't know about optimizing our sewer plant. We didn't, that wasn't even a, it wasn't even in our dreams at that stage, but thanks to some of the work that Respec's done, we now recognize that there's some optimization that can occur. Y'all pay, y'all approved, and we invested in some engineering to look at that. That was about 25,000, so that's been spent and done. And tonight, what you're, what's on the agenda for approval is the outcome of that research, which is development of a equalization basin and improvement to some of our lift stations. So, we'll probably add, when we make modifications to CIP, there'll be a new project that will be added, and that'll be this equalization basin and wastewater treatment plant improvements that are related to that. And then, so that was lift station repairs, again, engineering tonight for that, and the equalizations on the agenda, about a half million dollars or so. Sewer collection lines repaired and serviced, we haven't done anything with sewer lines yet. Again, that's work that'll be planned based on some of the CCTV work that we're doing now. And I anticipate, potentially with some of the street projects, we're going to line some of that up as well. So, then we have a water line replacement program. This is where the Lafayette water line project will probably fall in. Again, we had budgeted $550,000 for this year, but throughout the five years, we anticipated spending a little bit north of 5 million. So, this is just a small fraction of what we anticipate having to spend on improving our water lines. And the Lafayette project, I don't have an estimate for it, but I would expect that's going to be a fairly expensive project. It'll probably exceed what this is, what we've budgeted. The River Bluff improvements, I mentioned those earlier, we've spent 165,000. That $800,000 or $760,000 encumbrance, that's the balance of the parts and materials that we've ordered. So, the city took an extraordinary step of ordering all the materials and, you know, telling the contractors, when we're not forbid, the city will supply 100% of the material, you're just supplying the labor and the know-how to build out the system. And so, that's what you see there, that's what that encumbrance is. The total project for the River Bluff improvements was 3 million dollars, so this is only a part of the total cost, because it's, we're only looking at, again, what we anticipated spending by the end of this calendar year. And that's the other thing to make, mention of, is the CIP, unlike the budget, we're going through this budget process. The budget runs from October 1st to September 30th every year. The CIP is a little weird because it's on a calendar year basis, it's, it doesn't run with our fiscal year. Okay, tree trimming, we heard a little bit about that at our last council meeting, but it is needed, and it's, we need to do a lot more than what we've already done. But again, the council funded $80,000, and that has been spent and is being done. We're fully anticipating to do this level of tree trimming every year for the next three or four years, just to kind of get caught up, to get this, the electric lines protected and maintained in a way that it really should have been done all along. Drainage improvements, you can see there's 38,000 that's been expended there. Most of that's engineering. You're in the process, this, this is really, the 240 was for a drainage study, and we did sign, it's another question. What, I don't remember the total amount of the agreement that we have with KFA for the drainage. Do you remember? No. I put you on the spot. I don't, I don't remember either, but that's what that amount is. So, we've only spent 38, but there's, we've encumbered more than that. That really should be on that column, that encumbrance column, because we've agreed to have them do that massive comprehensive drainage study that they're in the midst of doing, that they'll probably wrap up. I think they're supposed to be delivering their final report in September, October of this year.
K3?
Yeah. Yeah. You think it was what?
245.
Yeah, 245. So, we're, she thinks it was 245,000.
I was thinking task orders.
Yeah, so I was saying, I think we're going to spend every bit of that this year, sorry. So, that's utility bonds. So, that's the CIP. Again, I just wanted to kind of give you a report. This is my report back to you on where we're standing on the things that were approved, and how much we spent today, and how much we've encumbered, and how much is left. We're going to have a much more thorough report on the CIP. We'll look at all the years and the plan, and how much we've actually borrowed versus how much we need to borrow, and how much we have available, et cetera. All that's going to happen probably in September, October, after we're done, completely done with the budget. This is just the tourism, tourism business development budget. Now, we had, this is actually the hotel motel, so this was supposed to be the, the meeting where we went over all the special funds. Hotel motel is one of those special funds because it's a separate tax, but on the advice and suggestion of Councilman Martinez, we kind of, we renamed it so it'd be a little bit more transparent and understandable. I, what I foresee in the near future, I was explaining to the mayor earlier, is we'll probably show this as a general fund department in the general fund budget next year. And instead of showing it as the general fund transferring out money to the special revenue fund and having that be the place where the people, where we recognize and record the personnel costs, et cetera, we're going to do the reverse. We'll have the personnel, et cetera, everything recognized in the general fund, and we'll have the money transferred in from our hotel motel tax fund. And then we'll, the big issue is we just need to make sure that we're accounting for how we're spending those special taxes, because again, as we've talked about before, there are rules, regulations on how that money gets spent. And what our, our ultimate gain, goal and aim is, is to spend the hotel motel money in, in the methods that correlate with, with what the state law requires, which is heads and beds. We want to be able to do that in ways that really, the, the end result is very clear that, that we're investing the money to create additional heads and beds. Now, that's going to be easier to do in the near future when we have additional rooms at that, at the new hotel that is planned. Right now, we have a fairly small supply of rooms, so it's, when they're already at like 80% capacity, which is kind of where they are right now, it's hard to put more people in those beds. So, having more capacity is going to be a big, big game changer there. So, anyway, this is the budget.
Can you touch on one, because I think that we're talking about specifically with the hotel motel tax?
Mm-hmm.
I think that, based on what you were saying before, it sounds like we're probably going to increase that pretty substantially, first with the thing that Darren Hamm's going to talk about in a little bit, and then, second, with the, with the new hotel that comes on, so.
Correct.
And, okay.
So, what did you want me to talk about? Because I think you just said it all.
Yeah, I just said it. Can you talk about what I just said?
Yeah. So, yeah, we're going to add a lot of money here. It's actually going to become, it's good, it's a good and bad thing. So, in some, some respects, as we focus on tourism, we're going to create more tourism dollars. As more hotels come and get built, that'll create more of that hotel tax. But the hotel tax really isn't supposed to be spent on people, it's supposed to be spent on marketing and other things that bring heads and beds. So, although there'll be more money to pay for the position, at the same time, you really don't want to use that money for that position, you want to use it for the marketing, et cetera. So, it's a little bit of a catch-22 in that respect. This is the total budget, and just broken out by line for the tourism business development department. And you see how much of that's, you know, how it breaks out by personnel supplies versus services training. So, when we look at like the use of the hotel motel tax fund, that purchase services is probably the line item where you want to see that tax, the majority of that tax spent. You can legally spend it on personnel, but you want to spend as much as you can, and by purchase services, that's really, think about marketing and marketing-related things that are related to tourism. That, that's really what, where you want to spend most of that money.
What's repairs and maintenance? What are you putting under that?
So, part of this, the legacy of this fund is that it's always taken care of the Steinbach House, which is a tourism-related, you know, facility.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but there is, yeah, there is a separate fund where we track, that is specifically for the Steinbach House, that Leroy and I are going to talk to you all about, probably after the adoption of the budget. We'll come back and look at our fund balances and all the various, like, actual account balances in the bank, and talk about ways that we might use that, those monies to benefit the purposes for which they were established. For instance, there's like $1,100 in the special library fund. We probably need, we don't need to have a separate account with that money in it. We probably need to find something, spend that money, and close that account. Same thing with Steinbach House, there's I think $11,000 in the Steinbach House fund. The Steinbach needs roof and other repairs. You need to find an appropriate use for that fund, the council does, use that money and close out that account. Because there's, there's a number of those that the audit, our auditors looked at and said, "You really don't, you have a lot of the bank accounts, and you really don't need this many. You've been sitting here and not, not really doing anything." So, that's something we'll probably talk about, again, once the budgets, this process of the budgets has been wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
This is the debt service funds, and this is really just to kind of convey what is already in other places in the budget. So, you'll see those transfers out from the utility fund and general fund for debt service, and this puts all that in one place, so you can see it all at the same time. The proposed 2020, well, it shows you the proposed revenue and the expenditures, and you'll see the principal and interest payments that will be made for these bonds. This is the 2012 refunding bond, that's part of that drainage, all those drainage improvements were made back in 2003 that are about, we're about to fully pay off. Those will be fully paid off in August of 2023. So, about the time, next, this time next year, that, that debt will be completely paid for, which is why, again, we're going through that process with the drainage, having it looked at, coming up with the master plan, identifying projects, because we'd like to issue some debt next year so that the old debt falls off, we start tackling new, or not new, actually, old drainage problems with new money, and we have the ability to pay for it through the same drainage debt service fund. And then, there's the, the 2022 bond that we just issued, and you can see the payment there. It's just, it's an interest-only payment this first year. That's at 235. And then, this is the utility fund, and this is for the 2022 debt, and they're also only making interest payments at this stage. Important dates coming up, we're going to talk about this in a minute. You're going to make it official with the adoption of the tax rate, when you're going to have the tax rate hearings. We're proposing August 9th as the first tax rate hearing. August 12th will be when the, that Friday will be when the budget's actually due to the CSE proposed budget. The 23rd, we'd have the second tax rate hearing and the first budget hearing, and then, the 25th, we'd have our, I'm sorry, tax rate hearing and budget hearing. Something's wrong with this. Maybe we're publishing a second budget hearing on August 25th? Then, September 1st, we have the final budget public hearing, and then, September 13th, we actually, that's where we'll adopt, well, we have the public hearing for the budget and the, and its adoption, the public hearing for the tax rate and the tax rate adoption, and then, the following meeting, the last meeting in September, when we would update our comprehensive fee schedule. We'll also look at all of our financial related policies, discuss those, and adopt those. And the concept here is that every year when we adopt the budget, we look at our financial policies, see if they still make sense, make any changes that we think are appropriate, and we adopt those as well. So, we're going to talk a little bit later, another item on the agenda is the solid waste rate, the trash rates that are going up, and we're going to make those effective. Normally, we'd make those effective on September 3rd, so definitely going to talk to you tonight about whether or not we want to make a special revision because of the increase. The city's paying the increased rate, but I'll talk about that in a few minutes. This wraps up my presentation on budget. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Scott. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on approving a task order with Respec Engineering for sewer retention facility slash regional lift station.
And for that?
Mr. Russell.
We have Russell per sign for Respec.
Hey, Russell. All right, just to give you a little background, we, on the, when we did the Phase 2 report, the new development that we were anticipating at that time was kind of stressing out the wastewater plant capacity. So, we, we brought in some folks, we actually went on a visit of the, of the treatment plant, and in talking with Daniel out there, a couple of things came to mind, one, or came to the forefront. One is, that plant gets loaded by two, two lift stations, east side lift station and the main lift station. And basically, you are having to feed that plant currently through the night in order to maintain the bugs, because you get surges during peak flows and then you get no flow. And so, we started thinking through that, and then also, some of the data that he was telling us while we were there as far as flow rates that you were experiencing, started to click based on some of the estimates that we had used that are typical for SAWs. So, we actually got all the data from the city at that point, did kind of a quick study of basically your flows coming to that plant, and were able to basically lower the flow per LUE that we, that was originally being estimated. So, basically, you can serve more LUEs in that plant than if you just use kind of base SAWs estimates. So, so we kind of came up with actual flow numbers for your plant, is what we did. So, then, as we were looking forward, and the Phase 2 report was also contemplating whether or not we needed to start planning for a new plant, which is probably in the 15 million range as far as capital expenditure, so.
You're supposed to estimate high. I thought you'd learned a lesson about it. 30, 30 million for a new plant.
So, you know, we were looking at all that, and that was going to affect really y'all's probably negotiations with the developers on how y'all were going to structure the next development. So, when we started looking at kind of that surge flow, the reduction LUEs, we kind of mapped out for you guys kind of over the next years, as LUEs come online, kind of how that plant, what we need to do with the current plant. So, the thought was that we look at flow equalization as a, as an alternative to, number one, reduce those surge flows you have. So, basically, if we can have a holding tank, if you think of it before the, for the current plant, your lift stations can surge into there, and then we can just feed the, the plant consistently throughout the day. So, two things that gives us, one is hopefully better operational efficiency, you're not having to feed the plant, pay to feed the plant during off-peak times. Second is, we'll be able to add some capacity to that plant because now we've got, and so, again, that kind of extends the life and the number of LUEs that we could serve, and so.
Are you saying feed the plant?
No, feed the plant means the bugs die. So, you guys are sleeping at night, there's no wastewater coming to the plant. Those bugs, those bugs don't like to not have food from you, so microbes die. So, what you do is you put dog food, or you put something in there basically to feed the bugs.
And we're buying stuff.
So, you're, so you're paying to feed the bugs to keep them alive, so when you wake up in the morning and it go, it works.
Are we spinning? Is that, I seem to remember a number of about 100,000 a year on that, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know what the operational cost.
It's at least that amount.
All right.
That's low. It's at least that.
So.
Dog food's less.
So, a part of this scope is to basically start looking at the planning for that equalization basin, which estimated cost for that is much less than a new plant. So, that's one of the scope items on here. At the same time, the city was contemplating, I think, some upgrades to the main lift station, which will feed into this basin. So, we've actually been down there a couple of times. We think the scope of that work may extend into the main that actually comes into that lift station. So, we have some optional stuff in here if we have to clean or, and look at that, kind of that last segment coming in there. It looks, really, it looks like from the as-built condition versus the plan that maybe that that lift station needed another six feet or so, and so, you're getting kind of some surcharge back into that line currently. It all works when it pumps and so, but it does not work probably optimally, so.
The initial six-foot depth, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, I think it may have been built short, is our initial gut, maybe from what we're looking at in the plans and when we were out there. So, haven't verified that with survey or anything, but you are getting surcharging back in that line, so that, kind of need to look at both of those in combination. And then, the last is, there are some improvements to the east side lift station that do need to happen. Mainly, we need to add another pump in there for redundancy, as we've got more and more coming online. There is space for that. There's not space in the panel, but there's space in the, in the tank. So, we need to do some small retrofits in order to be able to maintain livelihood there on that side of town. So, those are really the three kind of scope items that are here, is looking at the flow equalization, looking at the main lift station, which services all of the old part of town, so to speak, and then, the east side lift station improvements. So, those were the three. Kind of in estimating these with city staff, we felt that, that these were doable under kind of your current impact fees, which we're kind of reevaluating at this point, but we felt like, felt like this was consistent with where you have your fees set at this point, as opposed to additional capital from the developers for this. I think that kind of covers kind of how we got from A to B to C, so.
Again, not a project we, we needed, the lift stations are going to need improvements, but we didn't originally contemplate this as part of our CIP, in part because we had that Phase 2 plan that was wrapped in the development, and this is since... that Phase Two plan that was wrapped in the development, and this has since come out.
The other, I think, key point here too to make is, the plant is currently, I think, permitted at .7. It says it's rated designed to .9. Not sure why it was permitted less. So, when the flow equalization comes online, we're probably going to need to look at, and I think y'all's permit is due in the next, I think y'all just renewed it, so it's going to come up in the next two years. So, when that renewal comes up, we're probably going to need to look at the rerate of that plant, and depending on where we're at with this flow equalization basin. So, I think the idea is here is that we would design and be ready for that, but you probably may not trigger construction of that until you get enough LUEs that, that, you know, now you've got to go. So, you would have some flexibility, I guess, when you want to make that capital expenditure in the council at that point.
Can you explain those numbers? You said .7 or .9?
Yeah, .7 million gallons a day is what the, is what the plant is currently permitted for. If you look at the design plans, it's at .9 million gallons per day. So, I think that may be the new portion that was built, .7, as far as rating.
We also underbuilt the plant. We did do some things that needed to be done, so the design may not have been executed fully.
Correct, yeah. I know there's some components that were removed, but grit removal was not included in, I mean, ours.
Does this require TCEQ approval?
It will require TCEQ approval, yes, once you want to go to construction. So, typically, typically, we would go to design and then submit to TCEQ, similar to what we'll do on the water side as well.
So, can you explain the functionality? I like the creativity with this. So, what kind, the thing that would concern me about that would be venting, because there is, there's methane gas buildup, I would imagine, in that system. So, how does that?
In the flow equalization?
Yeah. So, you've basically got a big enclosed toilet pot, right?
Yeah, it'll probably be an open basin, much like you have there now. It shouldn't be any worse than what you have currently in place. Now, you may have to look at odor in and around lift stations, because lift stations are typically closer to residential areas, and sometimes you've got to look at odor control in those particular locations. Like, you would be probably the closest resident in this room to the regional lift station.
I believe I am.
In addition to the RV part there, but.
So, it would be similar to what's in?
I mean, right now, your flow comes in and goes into those basins. So, all we're going to do is build an additional basin in the front there, and so, what you're doing there today is-
So, what's there is a basin right now?
What's that now?
At the regional park, that's a basin?
That's a lift station. That's a lift station.
Right. Not just wondering what?
So, this, this basin would go, if you've been to the new plant, there's those two BNR reactors. So, the water comes, the wastewater comes into that headwork sits there, and then it goes into those BNR reactors. So, we would basically take that flow from the headworks, so it'll go through the screen, it will come into this flow equalization basin, which will probably be located, you know, up that hill, above the plant drain, so that we can gravity, so we can gravity back down into the plant, so, yeah, and so.
Okay, well, that's interesting, because I was thinking the equalization basin might be located on the east side of town, but you're saying it'd be located up by the plant?
It would be, yes.
Okay.
So, the-
Was that a change from what we talked about originally?
We talked about, would we put it on the east side, but if we put it there, we're not able to equalize the flows from the main lift station, because those two lift stations come in separately. So, if we go at the plant, then we can rerate the plant, use the capacity of the plant.
Well, there's space up there, too. So, that's good. But, for God's sake, don't make us build another dam.
Basically, this pond is going to go up and down, but flow into the plant will-
Will be consistent, correct.
That way, you don't have to keep bugs, because they're going to keep a steady stream of groundwater.
You're going to save money that way?
Correct.
So, our pumping capacity can keep up with all of that during those surge times? Because basically, you're pumping it during the surge times, you're pumping all that stuff if you don't have a basin at that lift station?
Right now, you're keeping up, but I think you need improvements at the main lift station in order to, you probably need some things there that, to get up to today's standards, I'll just say.
Which we already, we already knew that. So, we already knew there was a capacity issue anyway. So, that improvement had to happen whether you're creating the-
Equalization basin or not.
That was part of the reason, in the CIP, you see the lift station improvements. We already knew that we had a problem on the east side and at the regional, because as we develop, as we increase the number of people, we're going to increase the amount of volume each one of those is processing. So, we knew we had, that's why there's $150,000 there for that, because we knew we were going to have to expand those.
I was just thinking that we were talking about, because I thought that there was a pumping limitation, that's why we were talking about putting the basin at the, by the east side lift station, the big one. But, if you're saying that that's not the case-
That's not the case in that look, yeah.
Well, as per usual, you're spot on.
We do, we do need to add another pump there to basically be able to have, to be able to push more through the portion main and to have some redundancy. So, if you have a pump go down, you've still got two that can push. Right now, I think you have two and you're alternating, but you're going to get to a capacity at which you're going to want two pushing, so you want another pump in case one goes down. So, you have, the lift station was, it contemplated that from a pumping perspective, it's just a control panel, and that's, didn't necessarily contemplate putting another panel in, so. So, your priorities are probably your main lift station at the park, that's probably your number one priority. It was already on your CIP, you need to, you need to address that in short order. Then I think the other two, depending on what happens first, if we get, we get enough growth out east, that we need to look at that lift station versus the flow equalization. I think those two then come kind of behind, behind that one, so.
Well, the projected impact fees are more than sufficient to pay for the anticipated costs of the program, which is, yeah.
Oh, sets it pretty quickly.
Plus, it'll, your operators will be happier. I mean, it is a lot of effort for them to keep the plant alive. And plus, we'll have more, as more growth comes, you're going to have more flow, which will help in that, some of it, but you will get more spikes, too, so.
All right, any other questions?
I think it was like .1 million gallon. It was like a .1. Add, so, I think we would take you like to one. We're kind of thinking with that and the rerate, you're going to get to one, over 1 million gallons a day, one, 1.1, somewhere in that regard. I think the good thing now is we've kind of laid out based on LUE, so, you know, depending on economy and how, how things, that kind of, there's some trigger points now for you when you have to do certain things, which I think is, is good. We didn't necessarily have that, that thought process.
Yeah, I think this approach will address the growth that we're aware of present, which means, I mean, you know, we have a five or six-year solution before we even start looking at, well, do we need to expand at the current plan or build a new plant? That's all down the road.
And it being proactive instead of reactive.
Well, and the cost, well, the cost of doing that is going to be borne 100% by the new development for, for making these improvements to this plant at this time, but they're also helping contribute towards what may eventually be needed, which is a new, a new plant somewhere else, or plant expansion.
Yeah, I think the benefit to the ratepayers, we're trying to push off the large capital expense of a new plant as long as we can, try to recover our investment on what we've already invested there, as, as far as we can. So, that's kind of the, the goal we have.
Big plus.
The next question will be, is if you reclaim areas of those ponds and you have more space there, that may factor into decisions you want to make as council, when that day comes for expansion. But, but you have that investment there, you know, there. So, you have to weigh, you have to weigh those things. Plus, permitting a new facility and citing it and all that, it's not, not an easy public discourse.
Process, yeah. We've experienced that. So, if I can, I want to make sure that I understand the quantification of this. So, right now, we have, in the city currently, we have approximately what, do we have 1,200, 1,500 LUEs consumed?
Now, you're going to test me. I want to say we're around 2,000. I don't, I don't remember what the exact number is. 2,000, we're looking at 5,000 is kind of the planning number.
So, we're looking at adding an additional 5,000. We have 2,000 currently, so we're looking at adding basically two and a half times that in capacity through this process, right?
On the, on the wastewater side, no, because you have, you have-
Your existing capacity is not being used.
Yeah, the existing capacity is not being used. You're at less than half the capacity of the plant currently.
Okay.
In flow. So, the first thing, you know, and the reason to try to offset another major capital improvement is, let's maximize, you know, more flow, more easier to operate, more consistent we have, and you're going to get, you're going to get quicker return on the investment you've already made there as, as.
So, equating this back to a number that we are, we've become a lot more familiar with it, which is the LUE. So, how many total LUE with this plan, with this, do you anticipate this modification making? So, we're looking at 5,000 additional for the water, but how many more above that will it handle?
You're looking at, man, I'm doing this on the fly. So, I think, I think we rated the rate at about 165 per LUE, I think is where we ended up on the rerate. So, if we had 100,000, you're looking at 600, 6, 800 there, so. But, you're, you're only at, well, let's just do, let's go to one. So, if it's a million gallon rated plant and the flow is 165, that's roughly 6,000 LUEs in round numbers.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so.
So, it actually handles more than our, currently anticipated growth rate?
Well, you're currently permitted at .7.
I'm sorry, the developments that we are aware of.
Currently, if we didn't do anything, you have 4,200, and you have roughly half of those spoken for currently, so you have, so you have half of those available. So, in round numbers here, right? Just off the cuff here, real quick. So, you have roughly 4,000, maybe you got 2,000 in place. That means you got 2,000 to serve. Well, we're already saying maybe we're going to need 3,000, so we're over that. So, we've got to make some improvement. So, the question is, do you make a new plant improvement at 15 to 20 million, or do you try to do something to buy time? And so, we've kind of laid out a strategy to buy time, to get that up, maybe to 6,000 LUEs and kick, kick the can a little bit, maximize the plant.
But it's really not a true kick the can, because what you're doing is you're making the plant more efficient, permanent, well thought out.
Correct.
And, and by doing that, will the plant, you think maybe 1.20?
Yeah, it's going to depend on how much we can rerate between the .7 and .9, so we're, you know, we're trying to be a little conservative there, but. Yeah, see, I was afraid here. So was he. You're testing me here, for sure.
You guys have any more questions? All right, so, one thing, just as a point of procedure, Scott, one of the things that we talked about on here is making sure that we're including anytime there's a budget thing, whether it requires a budget amendment or if it's included in the current budget. So, can we make sure that we do that going forward?
What did it say is the?
So.
Yeah, so it's, so the fiscal impact, so on the agenda summary report, there is a fiscal impact source of funding. So, you don't like what's there?
I'll work with you on the, on the actual wording. So, what you're saying is that this does not require a budget amendment, is currently in our CIP?
Correct.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear on that. I think that just stating this does or does not require a budget amendment?
Okay. Yes, no. Check the box. Got it.
This does or does not, yeah. And just put it in the recommendation, or right under the recommendation. So, the recommendation, the staff and city administrator recommend the council consider and/or approve the proposal from RESPECT Engineering on the Master Services Agreement for Task Order 17, in the amount not to exceed $548,715. Do we, do I have a motion?
So moved, as you read it.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I'm headed to USD. See y'all.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, the next item is public hearing to receive testimony, and here are arguments for and against a petition to annex 9.230 acres of property, being 8.730 acres out of survey number eight, abstract 1316, Edward Pinjano, and 0.500 out of survey number 97, abstract number 1259, LM Collard, being a portion of Lot 1 of the Magnolia subdivision, Castroville, Texas, Medina County.
Also known as County Village Phase 1.
As we say, this is, I think, the second.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at 6:48. Okay, do we want to, so we just opened it. Does anybody have any comments about it? Questions, concerns? Okay, do we describe it and then close the hearing? Do we close the hearing right now?
No, you can go ahead and close it.
Okay. So, we're going to close it at 6:49.
We will have a second public hearing at the next meeting with the ordinance to adopt.
Great. All right, thank you. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on setting the date, time, and place for the public hearing on the proposed FY23 tax rate.
You'll see in your packets a layout of what we're recommending. I believe it's August 9th, but it's included, we already included the calendar, etc.
Works for me.
There's, there's two terms, August 9th and-
What staff was trying to do is scheduling, so, it is the worst kind of word, math, word puzzle that, yeah, I can ever recall doing, much worse than anything I ever did in high school, where you have to figure out when to set the date, because the date can't fall. If you're raising taxes by a certain percentage, then it has to fall, be published by this date, but it can't be more than this many days from the first date, and the second date must be this meeting. It's just, it's the worst, anyway. So, hats off to Deborah and Legor for figuring out these dates and doing it in a way that did not require a special meeting. So, if you adopt these dates, we can do on the regular meetings. So, I believe the, the recommendation is in your packet, and I'm trying to come to there, so.
So, the recommendation is the first tax rate hearing on August the 9th during the regular council meeting, and then the second one would be on August 23rd during the regular council meeting.
Yes.
I move that we adopt those dates, that's right.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't, I will not be running 23rd, but you don't need to have a few.
Yeah, no, that's right, just for the hearing. And thank you for mentioning that, because on the, no, first meeting is September. So, September 13th is when we really do need everybody to be here, because that's when we need a super majority for adoption of the rate and the budget.
And that's the, that's September 13th.
Yes.
Any more discussion? I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on setting a public hearing on the proposed FY23 annual operating budget.
In general, you only have to have one budget hearing, but we have the last few years had two, just so that if we had, you know, comments from the citizens and that allows them twice. So, on this, it shows August 23rd. And then September 13th, we would have the final budget hearing and deal with the budget, but, but.
Okay. So, then the recommendation is?
August 23rd.
And September 13th.
All right. So, the recommendation, August 23rd and September 13th, great. Do I have a motion on that?
I will move that we adopt the dates of August 23rd and September 13th for our two hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is presentation on goals and objectives for tourism and business development. This is Darren Ham, Tourism and Business Development Director. So, now we have Darren, Devin, David, Darren.
So, after Darren Ham's done, I did mention I was going to show you the, where to find the stuff that's been shared with you, and I didn't do that, because I forgot. So, when he is finished with his presentation, I'm going to take the dongle and show you where you can find the budgetary information.
Do you want to just send out a link on that?
I did already. I will after this meeting, I'll do that. I just wanted to be able to show you visually, here's how you find it.
Thank you for letting me steal that. Adopt that, how's that?
Anything else you want to say before I get going?
I can keep going if you want me.
I feel like you're going to, so I'm just gonna wait a minute. I'm learning.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time, too, I'm sorry, he's officially announced, I guess, because Mr. Dyer, Congressman Dyer, met him at the EDC, we did not meet there yet, so maybe we need to officially say this.
So this is Darren Ham, our new Tourism and Business Development Director, who has been doing a phenomenal job. I've been so amazed at how you have come in and listened and asked and really heard people. You've been, you've spent so much time out in the public, talking to the people and getting to know them, and I think that what you've come up with has just been spot on, it's a great job.
Thank you.
And I'm not gonna talk anymore, because I leave that to Scott.
If you're saying good things, I'll just wait. I can definitely wait for that. Okay, I just want to thank you, yeah, some of you I've just met for the first time, and some of you I've had an opportunity to talk to and to meet before, and so I appreciate you. Actually, I was able to stay in Phil's spare house for a little over a week, and that's one of the things that I start this initial conversation with, is that when he was showing us, he's an excellent host, showing us around his property and the great view, he was gonna show us inside the main house, but he said he didn't know if that was gonna be okay, because Mary was.
Last year you said that, I got in trouble with Mary.
And so I'm gonna go, I'll probably send her a message saying, I'm still telling that story, but anyway, but her, you know, he wanted to make sure, he was being respectful, he was saying, I wanna make sure that everything looks good, we're not gonna bring you in the house if, and so of course, Mary was, I think she always has the house ready to go, I think, that's my sense, okay? But anyway, we were able to go in and see the house, and I think that that's really kind of what I believe in this initial phase, what you're gonna see is really that first step, is Castroville has incredible character, has a credible community, a group of volunteers and people who are very engaged, which is one of the things that attracted me to your, to this city here. And so in that first initial stage, so I thought to myself, you know, we have all of these things already going on, and so what we really need to do is just to, what I would say, gussy everything up. Let's make it look sharp, and let's make it look clean, let's represent our city, not just to us within the community, but also to people outside of the community, and let's do that in a way that speaks to the history and the character of the city. And so that's kind of what I started to do. As the mayor mentioned, I've been out a lot, meeting with people who are key stakeholders, going to continue on, meeting with people who are invested in the community, trying to meet them as much as I can. Sat down with the Economic Development Committee Council, I always get that C wrong, but anyway, was able to talk with them and get feedback from them, and look at their notes from their, their brainstorming sessions. I've been at the library exploring and reading about the history of Medina County and the city of Castroville, and then also talking to a lot of the local businesses and getting feedback from them, what they see, what they're hoping for. And also, even in since that point, and started to go out into our county. Today, I had the opportunity to go to Divine and some other cities, because I need to know not just what is here, but I need to know what is out there. And to be honest, in the foreseeable future, I'll be widening that search, looking to other communities that have done, and maybe experienced what Castroville's about to experience, and finding out how they handled it and what they did, learning their best practices as well. And so the three areas of my initial focus are business, tourism, and communications. And the very first thing that we're gonna be talking about and showing you is an identity system, some graphics, some way to present our city to, not only to our existing community, but those people who are surrounding areas, and also, because we also believe that if we can help with the look of our city and kind of get everything consistent, everything brought together, looking the same way, that it's also gonna help our existing businesses, it's gonna help those people who are already here within Castroville. And so if you've looked inside your packet, or if you've seen, if the mayor showed you, I also discovered that the mayor likes to show people things. I was talking to someone in town, I said, oh, I've already seen all of that, Darren, it's okay.
It does give you credit, though.
But the idea here is to speak to this graphic identity, it's very clean, it speaks to Texas, and it speaks to Castroville and its history, the colors are based on that idea and that notion. And so a blue, a nice, rich red, and a gold. The red and the gold are kind of coming from past logos and the identity, and also looking at the owl, am I gonna say, I have to learn pronunciation, okay? Because I thought that San Antonio was in Bexar County.
You're not alone.
When I, like, wait a minute, okay, so, anyway, I'm working on all of those things, okay? But the idea with the owl, the flag that has the white, and then the red, and the yellows in it, that's kind of where that's also coming from, and then again, Texas. And so if you go to this graphic look, it speaks, I believe, to our history here, it speaks to some of the key areas that we're gonna be focusing on. The other thing I like about it is it's something we can add to, and the idea behind that is we have this visual, this graphic identity that goes out, and we start to use it in all of the different areas, and so we create business, oh, excuse me, business ideas, we create tourism documents, and all these other things that will help. And so that's kind of the look that you see there, that's kind of the look that will start to move into all the different areas of our identity. So if someone sees any kind of graphic identity or some piece that shows our local businesses or shows, it will all kind of have the same look in those, okay? And so what I was going, those are kind of the ideas behind it, because the wagon represents the landmark inn, and the mill that was there, and some of the other things that are a part of that. And then I also created this character, we've been working on him, he's a work in progress, I'm not sure about Mr. Castro, because you pronounce his first name.
Oh, me.
See, I know, see, I was not, I'm not messing that one up this time, okay? Not gonna mess up, but I'm also like.
Oh, Henry.
Anyway, so.
And thank you for fixing the Monopoly Man.
But yeah, well, you know, I still kind of like the Monopoly Man, if you haven't seen the Monopoly Man, I think it's actually in your packet. But the idea, so we're kind of tweaking on it, but the notion here is, is to kind of connect, not just to the history, but also kind of bring something a little more fun, a little more engaging, that we can cross to the younger generation, to younger people. And yeah, I like, I mean, some of these pictures have the mustache, and I love the mustache, so, but that way, and this is also something that we can do, it's actually something we can animate, it's something that we have lots of different, an ability to move that on a lot of different areas, using it in a lot of different ways, in a lot of different mediums. And hopefully, it's some way to connect other people, maybe the history doesn't mean as much, but it may be a fun character, will help introduce them to the history that we have, okay? And so the materials we'll create are a business guide, a visitor's guide that will go along with the one that's already in existence, we'll be able to work this identity system into the walking tour, into signage, into banners, into all of our promotional materials, okay? So that's kind of that, hopefully, that initial look, hopefully you like it, I want to show you kind of how it could translate into other areas. One of the things that I noted is a visitor center sign could use updating, even if it's not this, I believe it needs something, and so this is actually showing you, that's to the size of our current sign. So that blue one is the size of our current sign, that's a way that we could update that with that identity that it starts to see, so then everybody will start to see that identity, they'll see it in all the different, on the web, and social media, in all of our print, and then they're gonna start identifying that with Castroville. And I think that that's a really important thing, because when people start to see that, they already, I mean, again, Castroville has a great deal to offer as it is. It doesn't need help in that way, I think it just needs to help in a way to show people and to say that that's something that is valuable there that I would like to experience. So that's kind of an idea of what we could do with the visitor center, and that graphic identity could also be taken over into the Steinbach, because also, the sign in front of the house also could use some, I mean, it's, also has some of that weather aging, some of that sun aging happening to it. And then these are just other ideas that we could, these are, and to hope to show you how we could even use that in any kind of signage within the city, or along Highway 90, ways to tip our hat to people to say, there's something of interest to stop in Castroville to spend some of your money and resources, typically pass through traffic, and I can't remember the number, I forget the number here, I knew the number in the last city I worked for. I don't know the number here, it's actually like 30,000 or something.
About 30,000.
Yes, so I was actually close to remembering the number, but if you can capture, it's a small percentage of pass through traffic, spend money in your community, they spend on average $85 when they stop. And so if you can just do the math, and I'm not a mathematician, I'll leave that for other people, but if you think about that, that's a pretty large amount of income that would help benefit Castroville without any additional cost, as far as, you know, there's no other expense, we're just gonna capture out of town income. So this was kind of how this same graphic identity should be taken, in a way to show, because I believe in our downtown area, you could put banners down there, that would kind of highlight what we would like to see as our downtown area develops. And so this one shows you how that same graphic identity, that same look can be translated into other mediums and other areas. And then the idea that I've heard from other people, and I believe strongly, and I think we need some way, a gateway into our community, a gateway that when someone drives by, they look at that and they say, there's something there, I may not stop today, but I'd like to stop this weekend, or I'd like to stop later on. And so I really believe that we need something like that in our, as a gateway into our downtown area, okay? This is how the medium can be shown in T-shirts, oh my, this is how it can be shown, this is how we could use this identity system in ways to promote specific historical places that are important to us. And what I love about this medium is that this graphic identity, these graphics, we can take those into postcards, where we can have those at our visitor center for people to purchase, to send off to people that they know, it can be turned into stickers, it can be also turned into shirts. I think we can take some of this artwork, and we can really put it out in many different areas in many different ways to help promote Castroville. And what I also like about it is it's promoting our history, and so it's speaking very clearly to all those that see it of what Castroville is about, okay? And so just showing you some different ways. Okay, second thing is tourism, and really, a lot of what I just showed you would be, I think it works good for both business development and tourism. But I would just like to say that our main target in this initial phase would be San Antonio, people who are looking for day trips. The nice thing about that is, from a technological standpoint, we can target those people. We can reach into people in San Antonio who have interests that align with Castroville, we can reach and get people who appreciate the history, and we can target those people. That information exists, we can target those people, and we can send our message right to them. And the most, the least expensive way to do that is through social media. And one of the nice things about social media, a lot of the platforms, is they have, the age of those users have gone up, except for some of the ones that are, but we're not, this isn't something I would say we'd be targeting younger people, okay? So that would be in some of the initial phases. I also believe that we can approach schools, and begin to try to get that in because of our education. And I know that there's other areas, as far as like, we talk about getting people who are in, for, in the city of San Antonio for conferences, making sure we target those people. I have been working with the city of San Antonio, I've reached out and had meetings with them, and so we hope to move in, once we get all this kind of like, hey, we think this is a great direction, Darren, let's go for it, then we can meet with them, give them information, they're gonna be allowing us to put our stuff on their visitor's site. So I'm looking forward to those relationships, so we can help target in some different ways, okay? We're also working on business, both strengthening existing ones, and also working to reach other businesses. Two out of three jobs created in America were created by small businesses right now. So I think that, you know, sometimes we like to have bigger businesses, but oftentimes it's those people creating small businesses, businesses that are really driving our economy. And so I've already been meeting and talking, and we're working on a plan, working on a plan to do video, I think that's important, to get video out here. The nice thing about getting a lot of video footage is that we can use it for both tourism and for business development, we can get a lot of it in the can, and the nice thing is I have the skills required. If you go to the city that I worked for before, Delta Colorado, look at their video, that's a video that I worked on, sat down with the videographer, we worked on that together, and I actually edited it and put that all together, okay? So we can work on something like that. And then we also want to do a prospectus, and I've already got it in my head, it's already kind of going. What you would have is a cover, and then on the inside flap, we would have statistics and information about why Castroville's a good place to do business, and then there'd be a flap on the back that would allow us to put in, depending on who we're targeting, different properties for different areas that fit, why we're going after those businesses. And so we're gonna be beginning to develop a business prospectus. We've already started to work on our social media with Instagram, because a lot of young people go to Instagram, just find locations of interest, they're looking for a place that's different, and so we've started to do that. You can find us on Instagram, and then finally, because I didn't have enough to do, right? Internal communications, we're working on the website. I'll be honest, I've been on our website, I've tried to work on our website, it's not the most intuitive website I've been to, but we've gotta work on it, and so we're trying to bring that up to date. I think a part of this build, in this early phase, is also getting together and making sure that we have something that promotes Castroville in the appropriate way as well. And then also the newsletter, so we're gonna be doing, we're gonna update the newsletter, and to make sure that we are giving people information that's relevant, and so I think that's very important, and so we hope to have, so you can hopefully see how the identity graphically will go across the newsletter, and then also, we're gonna be helping out with the local events, I'm helping out with local events, and we've already started to work that process, we've got a meeting, I think, next week. They've changed the name on what was originally, I think, Porkin in the Park, but it's totally changed its name now, but, and so, last but not least, because I've talked quite a bit, so much that I'm losing my voice, we're working on the lecture series that the mayor mentioned, Our Journey Forward, we'll be sending information out the next couple of days on that. The Parade of Homes, I've also been working on, The Eclipse, in 2024, we are in the crosshairs of The Eclipse, and so we're developing that, and there's a local group that I've been meeting with now on that list, and so we'll be developing materials for that as well, to promote Castro as a place to come, book our hotels, be in our Airbnbs, stay here for that event. It's gonna be on Mondays, for two, is it two hours? Almost three hours, it'll be in our, so. And then also National Night Out, and I'll be working with Devin and the Police Department on the National Night Out, that will be happening out at the.
Airport.
And David as well, that will be happening out at the airport, okay? All right, now, speaking of hotels, this is what they discussed earlier. And so there's a couple other things, random things, and these will be the random things, here, let me get, I'm gonna do other next steps later, but here, first of all, cleaning up our city logo, okay? I could tweak this, but I've worked on making it vector based, and that's better. Vector based means we can make it any size we want, I've been having trouble finding one that I can use for print, and so I just decided I can make, I can make, clean this up and make it work, okay?
You still haven't, did you include a slide?
I'm not putting all those pictures.
All right, so, hold on, hold on, yeah, wait, all right, so he and I had a debate about how many different logos there were, because I only remember, like, one or two, okay? And, but I did not have, one thing that Darren, that the mayor recognized in Darren Ham is that he does have a designer's eye, I mean, that's, he knows marketing, he knows design, and he has a real eye for it, and he sees subtle differences and details that are lost, frankly, on me, but, so we were having this discussion, and I could tell what he had done, he walked out, go ahead.
So I just, we were having this conversation about the logo, and I just went out, I officered out the airport, I walked, I took a picture of the logo that's inside the airport, I took a picture on, I think maybe it was a carpet, I don't think it was either, I took every picture of every logo on every vehicle that was in a parking lot, and I sent them all to him.
There were no two alike.
Everybody's different, there's not one of these that's the same.
And he was right, there were no two alike. So we desperately, one of the things we really need to figure out is.
We need to work.
What is our logo?
Uniformity.
Uniformity, so that, and it's throwaway, every one, and part of it for me was, we don't, I couldn't even get, there was ones that were blurry, and there's ones that are not very, they're just not the quality that we need to present our city in, they're not. And so I was like, I have the skills required, I'll clean it up, and I can still tweak on it, but I'm like, we need to work on it, because.
I prefer shot, I prefer personal sales.
Yeah, and so to send it to a printer, which we're gonna be printing these invites for the lectureship, and I'm like, I don't have a good enough logo.
Well, and part of the, part of the issue is, when you really do go through this branding effort, and what, so. effort and what, so one thing, so you just, he just went through the colors, the designs, some of these other aspects that are attached to the logo and to the branding of the city. And I, I've mentioned this on EDC, but I think it's worth mentioning here as well. I've gone through a very similar effort where we went through and we interviewed various design groups, et cetera, they all made these pitches, it was really hard to choose which one, we finally settled on one, they spent about six to eight months in our city and then they developed what, basically a brand book for the city. What Darren is now delivering to you all within this enormous amount of time he's had to work in since June 21st is very similar to the $85,000 project that my prior city engaged a firm to do. He's about 70, 80% of, he's already put together and delivered to us. So I'm extremely impressed just with his ability to, to be in the community such a short amount of time and to assess and identify a path forward that I think has been very well received. And I think that's because of the amount of diligence he's paid to listening to people and their feedback and input. So I failed to mention that earlier, but I really do think, if nothing else, not that you don't have to work from now, but if nothing else, we've already gotten, in some respects, our money's worth with Darren Hamm because he's already, he's delivering to us a brand book that would have, that could have very easily cost us quite a bit more. Anyway.
And the way that you're approaching this, I've got to say, it's the absolute right way. You're asking questions, you're, you're not coming in, I think that the fear is always that people will come in and tell everybody what to do. So all of us from this, I'm one as well, it is not our job to tell everybody what they need to do, what needs to happen with it. You've been asking questions. And what you've done is, you've gotten the answers from a wide swath of the community and delivered what they were asking for, not trying to change, not trying to create something. So I applaud you in that, it's fantastic.
Well, thank you. And I hope that everybody who would say, when they look at what I've presented, would say, that speaks to Castro. I hope, that's my hope. After this meeting is to have this group say, we think that it speaks to our history and it can be something that can positively, as we move forward as a city.
So when you look at the logo design, is it possible to incorporate the subtleties that you see there and that?
Well, and that's, okay, that's a good question. Anyway.
Broke it. There you go, it's back up, but you just need to go back to this slide.
Yeah, I just need to go back here. So, I want to get, all right.
So like the subtleties there, you can see there's a red door, it looks like you can actually make out some of the weathering that took place on the roof and.
Well, lady, and that, and I don't know, there you have it. I mean, which, which house do we want to recreate? Yes, I can make it happen.
Well, this is the official seal, right?
I can make it happen because it would seem to me, and if we're going to go down this rabbit hole just a little bit, somebody has simplified it at some point. Someone got ahold of it and simplified it and cleaned it up and made it work better for whatever they were trying to accomplish. And it kind of, whenever that happened, it lost some of the character that you see in that one, it lost some of the character that I see at the airport. And to be honest, I like those better. I could easily create something that would fit that if that's what we decide, but I don't know how, I don't know how that works.
So I want to ask the coun, there's a couple of things to consider. The more detail you put into it, when you're making the logo smaller, on smaller print, it gets lost, right? It also, the more complex you make it to that same detail, if you're transferring that to shirt design logo or something else, it makes that either more expensive or again more difficult or et cetera. So there is some, there's something to be said for simplicity, right? So I think, I think we need your input on, well, how simple is, do we need it to be? But what I would ask for the council is, I mean, that is, I think, the official seal? So I would suggest that we stay as close and as true to that and look, and lean on you for guidance as to, well, how, is that too detailed? You know what I mean?
And then part of it is, so I would also guess that maybe when printing, when you're printing stuff and you have to put ink down, I mean, it's going to gum up pretty good. But nowadays, like I, I mean, this, we're doing this invite, we're doing it at a printer, I'm like, I don't think I've done something at a printer for a really long time. Most of the things we create now are done in digital print, which they come off a digital printer. And digital printers don't have those kind of issues. Like when you're, because you're not, it's just lasered on there, it's not, you don't have to deal with the printing. And I think that, I would also say that your, the logo size is never going to get to a size where it's going to be an issue. I just, I would love to clean, clean up the fact that sometimes the trees behind or sometimes, I love circles for trees, but not in this, well, I don't think that works there. So those are the kind of things we could clean up. And like I said, if you look at any, it's, I don't know, it could be like a game you could play, how many different citizens can you find, what, how many different logos? I don't know, but.
Well, that's what I'm asking, what do you think council should?
And that would also help to clean up the colors, because it comes out, some way we have it on, in the more black colors sometimes.
A true brand book, just like you saw those three colors that you were showing.
We would need to.
A true brand book will tell you, this is the color, like literally the, the number color that you use for the room, and this is the color used for the yellow or gold, and this is color you use for whether it's, whatever color that is, blue or green.
And the only place you would have any type of issue is it going to be an embroidery. It's the only issue. So in our, in the last city, we just took the date off, it was too small and everything else was able to reproduce. So sometimes you'd have to make some tweaks if it's going to be embroidered, because, or they end up being about that big, which, you know, maybe you want it that big, I don't know. But that would be the only place, embroidery is the only place I would see it, you might have to tweak it for that reason.
So you want to go around the horn and just ask for each councilperson's input on the seal?
Absolutely. Start with her.
I'd like to see a few candidates as opposed to just one. We could consider all of them.
So what do you think about the seal behind you?
If that's the official seal, if that's what the city has as its history, then that should be the guiding.
I think that's from 1844.
So, but you've got to use all of the things you've told us, the colors, the branding, you've got to find a way to use it all.
And, well, I prefer the original seal. Is that the original? As far as I know of it. Whatever the original is, that's what you prefer.
I actually think it is that.
Does anybody know how old that one is?
It might be on the back.
All right, we won't look at it right now. Councilman King?
Did they come up with the seals that came with the slogan?
No. No.
I know what the slogan was because there's a photo of the boy that came up with the slogan. Yeah. I mean, me, this, and like Kirk said, maybe like even our logo, you know, we have a blue sky, where this doesn't have a blue sky, but maybe start with this and have what we have on this, this here. Just see what they look like side by side.
Councilman Carrick?
I too like the detail and the depth of the, of understanding that complexity is its problems. So I would love as, as an artist to see what we can do by taking this and perfecting this as well.
Great, thank you. Councilman Martinez?
I too like the seal and I like everybody else's input of giving us a couple of options. And maybe we could throw in, because, you know, like, like you said, putting it on a shirt or something, not necessarily embroidery, but even, you know, the iron-on or whatever they call it now, different colors shirts are going to require slight twits, tweaks on the coloring. And so we could turn around and say, all right, these are the okay optional, because what if they put it on a red shirt?
And that's what you want to do.
Yeah. So that way, all of our bases are covered.
Well, and you tell them if it's black and white, here's what it looks like when it's black and white.
Shouldn't we trademark it once we get it done?
Yes.
Well, we have a trade, we do.
Believe it, it's a trademark.
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that trademark? So why don't we grab that one?
Well, I say that, there was a scout that did a project there five years ago, maybe six, maybe seven. And at that time, it wasn't trademarked, we didn't realize that. And so he did a coin and then they applied for it and once he completed his, his project, he gave it to, I mean, you know, they, we have the trademark. But I don't know if it shows that. I know that coloring, I have a, in my roll index to make proclamations when I first got here, I had to tweak it to make that, it's kind of, like you said, a maroonish color. I'll give you the numbers and that was just through the computer itself and helping.
Well, I.
On the coloring, I don't know.
I think the best thing is, let's, let's do a little bit of research and find out what the actual, the oldest one that we can find is and come up with some different options. And if the, I think it's best to adopt the, as much the original logo as possible, but if you have to make tweaks for a different medium, for different whatever, I think you just do it specifically like that and say, this is an acceptable form in these instances.
Why do you feel like it's necessary to go back to the, as old a one as possible?
I think you start from there because I think that that is, I mean.
But if nobody knows, but this is my point, if nobody knows it, nobody knows, right, and if you can figure it out.
I appreciate.
Never, what Priscilla's taught me is never let the truth get in the way of a good story.
Yeah.
And so I don't know, I think that's valuable to know, to know what was the original, if you can figure that out. But I would, I would encourage council not to let that weigh in too heavily because, again, there, a lot of changes happened from printing, the needs, the design, like, you want to take, you want to listen to your advisors and let them weigh in and say, okay, these colors really make more sense, this design makes more sense because it's a little more simple, whatever the reason is.
Well, if we weren't on video, I would agree with you. But since we're on video, I agree with you, we can blank this and it's been this way for a hundred years.
Well, I do know it's not a red. A lot of times they put a bright red. I know the, when I came here, the Tractor Supply building was designed after that coloring of here, the Alstation color was one of the things I understand that they requested that they do there. So it's not maroon, but it's kind of a.
Look, these two colors, the yellow and the red, that comes off the Alstation flag. And the Alstation flags are white and red.
Is that the new one or the old one?
The yellow is, they don't have a good gun.
So be careful. There's the overall Alstation's flag, there's the Northern Alstation's flag and the Southern Alstation's flag.
There's a new one, yeah.
But they, yeah, but it's, and nobody uses that.
We had a, we had a visitor come from Alstace this week and he said he's going to bring us the flag, that was the one that Priscilla took around.
It's like, it's like if they.
We digress.
So we will, so the feedback is, did we get all the way around? Did Paul and Sheena get their way in? Did Phil get the way in?
Thank you for paying attention.
Then we'll try to find the age.
So what I hear you saying is, we're going to go back to the original, see where it's at, and then maybe in between where we're at today and that day, come up with something that works production wise, that, so maybe it leans more towards our history than maybe current. And maybe, and you're asking me to do three different takes on that. That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
I think it's interesting, looking at that logo and looking at one on the wall, one of the interesting things is you'll see that as you stare at that one long enough, on the left-hand side where the roof meets the pillars, they've filled in the space between the pillars, which really, you know, realistically would not be filled in, right? That would be sky. And when you look at the one that's up there, you can see, okay, well, they didn't fill it in. And those are the subtle differences that I think you'll probably present to us and be able to show us, okay, here's what the original was, here's how they designed it, and here's an alternate design, and here's the subtle difference between the two, which one do you like better?
And either way, I think it's a really interesting journey to go down.
Yep.
I like journeys.
I think it's a good thing.
So money, hotel money?
Wait, now.
Oh, no, the good things.
One thing I'm trying to get to, well, there's two actually. One of them is, there's a list of, you have the list of my goals and I'm not going to go over those, but I'll let you, they should be in your packets, what I'm trying to accomplish in six months, 12 months, a year or two years. But I do want to get to this part, we did talk to, is it Blain, Blainbarger?
Blainbarger.
A law firm came in about collections and they introduced, introduced us to a firm called Homary, if I'm saying that in my pronunciation, the challenge Kansas way. And they specialize in recapturing lodging taxes and managing that. And so they presented to us several weeks ago, one of the things that they showed us was that Castroville, we're bringing in, if I'm reading the numbers correctly, in the last three years, a little over $15,000 from our Airbnb, some of those people who are hosting, and that's about how much we brought in. They told us, looking at the numbers and running them through, that we could be capturing over $78,000 from Airbnb and VRVO and those types of places that we're not, that's, that just gives you an idea of how much we're missing currently. And so they, for a nominal fee of $3,500, would be able to help manage that for the city of Castroville. They would be able to go find out who and then contact them and let them know what the process is to make sure that we're capturing those tax dollars and bringing them into Castroville.
The other thing is that, one of the nice things, one of the nice things about their service is they actually simplify the tax reporting for our existing payers as well and make that process a whole lot easier and less cumbersome for the hotel landmark in and the other existing payers. So that's a good thing. But that's not something that will come back for the council, it's, that's something that I've authorized Darren, just go and do. So he's going to go and do that.
I discovered something about Airbnb last weekend, I stayed in one in Port Ransus and we paid Airbnb online for their services. The host contacted us and had us pay them the hotel, hotel tax separately.
That's correct. So Airbnb, one of the reasons that you see the discrepancy is they collect the state tax. So they do remit, remit to the state. And that's actually how the firm that he mentioned knows that we're owed a certain amount, is because they're remitting it to the state like they should, but they do not collect the city's portion. And that can be collected through the, the parent company for a small fee, or we can go through this process and have the Airbnbs, just as you experienced, collect it and remit it directly to us as they should. And I don't think it's people stealing, I think it's just not knowing. You know, that they, they figure Airbnb's doing that, I don't need to do that. And little do they know that there's actually an additional tax that's supposed to be collected on behalf of the city. So I think that's a, that's a little hanging fruit. If we get even, you know, half of that, I'll be very, very happy as far as the amount that can be recovered.
Is VRVO the same thing?
Yes. Same, same.
Several of them, there's, there's a.
Is there, is that, every feedback is positive on everything? Okay.
So one of the things that, I guess, you just saw his presentation, we made it at EDC, we've now made it to council, what I'd really like to be able to do is tell Darren, great, do it. Like the things he's presented, the branding concept, the logo concept, we want to go ahead and release him to do those things. And I think he's spot on as far as what he's developed. It's very, yeah.
Because everybody, everybody who comes in as a tourist will buy a T-shirt.
Well, and stickers and bumper stickers. I think that you come back with a, with a business plan on what you're actually going to do with those.
Okay.
I think that that would be something that would be really beneficial, how you're going to partner with, basically if you're creating the merchandising, how are we going to merchandise it? Is it going to be online? Is it going to be through our local retailers, which I would highly recommend? And then how do we, how do we put that whole system together?
I want to call please. I think this is great. City of Castroville, the river runs through it and I never saw anything about the river.
Okay.
Just an idea.
No, I hear you. And I think that this is the first initial phase from what I showed you. And so I think the, our regional park is an area that even if you saw the initial presentation I gave when I first showed it to the mayor and to Scott, I mean, we're, you know, the birding wasn't in there at that point and we're going to get the birding, we're going to be also focusing on the river and that there's, because we have a lot of people that enjoy the river in our park. So that's, those are the kind of things in our trail system, those are the kind of things that we'll continue to add to it. That's the nice thing. Once we establish the framework, which it sounds like everybody is in agreement, that Once we establish the framework, which it sounds like everybody is in agreement that we're in a good place with that, once we establish that, we can add to it. And we can add different elements to it and use it in different ways to promote Castroville. So. Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is to come up with a business plan and kind of give you those numbers, and that's what you would like to see. Is that correct?
Well, just figure out the mechanism that you're going to use to implement this. In terms of what you're putting together, I think, uh, I think you're spot on. Right. I think you're hitting all the right, uh, items. You're looking at all the right things. You've already developed some of the, the right, uh, material. So from here, we just take it and say, so how do we actually market it? What are we going to do with those funds? How are they going to be used? Um, how does that benefit the local businesses? How does that benefit, um, the citizens of Castroville? So it's kind of putting together the business plan on that. But you're, you're heading right down. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to piggyback on this presentation, just show you real quick where you can find, um, your, uh, the information that's out there for you. So a couple of things to be aware of. So this is our team site. Um, this is also SharePoint, one and the same. They're just two different ways to look at the same information. Uh, so within Teams, uh, this is the folder, you'll, I, I have a lot more folders visible to me than, than you'll have visible to you. But you will be the city council folder, and you'll see that there is council meeting and agendas and the general tab. So under council meeting and agendas, when you look at files, you'll see twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, mayor archive, council agenda items, working drafts. This is where, um, the working drafts for each of our, as we're putting together, the mayor requested that he have early access to this. So this is before it actually ends up in the packet. You can go in and, and look at the items as they're being developed. If you have questions or concerns about those, uh, you, you can do that here. I don't necessarily recommend it because you guys actually have day jobs and, and things that you do. The packet is the final product, but I wanted you to know that you, we're, we're trying to get, in full transparency, we're trying to give you as early access as we can to as much information as, as is reasonable. So this is one place you can go to get that information. Um, the other area, and this is, I've showed you this before, but this is the pending list. So again, the pending list is right there in that council agendas folder, and it's just a document by itself. It's not its own folder. Uh, on the pending list, you'll see each of the, uh, meetings that are coming up, and the items that we've got scheduled or planned for those meetings. And some of these are things that we already know about because of, uh, budget calendars, et cetera. And others are items that either you or the mayor have brought to us and said we want to talk about eventually. So, um, that's what this is. So again, that's in, um, the teams folder in city council, city council meeting agendas. It's right here in this pending list. And then if you go to the general tab, um, and you click on files there, that's where there's a lot of information about a lot of different things. But in here is budget, uh, budget and finance folder. So we're in the city council, general, files, budget and finance. And then you'll see, there's the FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Here's the Excel files, uh, the workshops, one, two, and three. So this is tonight's workshop PowerPoint. Um, the historical proposed budgets, um, any appraisal district information we have. What I did was I just took it, again, at the mayor's request, I took everything that I have on my PC, and I just drug it over and, and gave you access. So there's really nothing that I have that you don't at this, at this point in time. So. Um, any other items, again, for Harold, for our new employee, or our new, for our new council board? This is a great place when you, or, or just can't sleep at night, I guess, and learn. There's a lot of information, interesting information here where you can kind of research and learn about things that, uh, maybe past projects and stuff like that.
I do have a related question.
Yeah.
Sort of related. So you make reference to the street, uh, the new streets.
Yes.
Will the public agencies retain the access to that schedule at all time? Cause that's been involved.
You've, the people who live on that street?
Well, in those neighborhoods.
Yes. Yeah. So there's a lot of, yeah, yeah. So one of the things that we're trying to get better at is just communicate. So there's a lot of, um, yes. There's a lot of communication that's going to happen within that subdivision as those, as those streets come up, door hangers, you know, that kind of stuff, so that they know, hey, your tree's going to be torn from this time to this time.
Now, the year I just, last November, I hosted a party right over there. And had I not known in advance, we woke up that day by the street.
Right. Would have been rough.
Anyway.
Right. So yes, there, there'll be, we'll be sharing it via the newsletter. There'll be updates about just our tree projects in general for the general public. But then specific to that neighborhood, uh, the contractors will be required to, to do door hangers. It's the same thing we're doing for the River Bluff Power Project when we finally get around to doing that. There'll be a lot of communication about that as well. So NAMI and, uh, each one of these.
Yeah, and I think we're getting better as a city. Uh, I think previously, things would just be done. Just kind of surprise, here you go. And so, um, you know, to Scott's credit and the staff's credit, they've been working, I don't think we're there yet. I think we're getting closer to that. But there's always that constant look at, um, I, I heard one time, stress was described as the difference between what you expect to happen and what actually happens. When it's different, you get stress. And so we're trying to make sure that people know what to expect. Good job on that.
Thanks.
Yeah. So again, hopefully you can find that when you're on your own computers. Do you have your spec yet? Okay, good.
There, there we go. Who cares?
I was getting hand signals from the people in the audience about where are we on the project.
Uh, that was about- A wrap up to the budget discussion. I wanted to show you where you can find the proposed budgets and the budget, uh, workshops. So I really intended to go with the topic.
All right.
All right. That's on track.
Nicely done.
Row number fourteen.
Next item is discussion and take appropriate action on applications submitted for open city boards and commissions. So on this one, you'll notice that you have one more application. We'll, uh, look at that. That's not going to be decided tonight. That'll be decided at the next, next council meeting. Uh, and that's for David. Uh, he actually just left. Um, but, uh, he had put in his application for the, the zoning board of adjustments. Endeavor put, do you want to introduce this or you?
I can. I can just read them off if you want to. A lot of times it's, it's kind of hard to figure out how you want to vote on these. On your, uh, in your packet, you do have a list of all the members that are, well, and there are current members that have resubmitted their application for, uh, possible, uh, new terms. And I can read them all off if you'd like on each board. Um, just so we have it on, I guess, on recording. The airport advisory board, you have three members. It's, uh, Brad Lauderdale, Matthew Ewald. They're both full board members. We have Carlos Deleon. He is a current alternate for, uh, alternate number one. All these are two-year terms. They're all up now. The library board has three full positions and two alternates, and we have Lacy Schott and Carol Junko. I don't ever say her name right. Uh, they're both full board commission, or committees, uh, members. They do have several openings on that board, so if we can put the word out. Uh, also, we're going to talk about that same board, the next, uh, agenda item, I believe. Uh, with Parks and Recreation, we have two full, full board positions, which are both Patrick Connor and Sarah Trowbridge. Uh, both of them have asked to be, uh, considered for reappointment. Also, the planning and zoning commission, uh, which is also, um, the impact fee committee falls under that category. The full board members of the planning and zoning are also part of the impact fee committee. And so we have Priscilla Garrett. Uh, she has requested to be re, uh, reinstated, and I have two alternate positions right now. Um, in general, you normally, uh, do an invitation to the alternates to see if they might, would like to be moved up into a full board position. I did hear back from Jeff Gardner, and he said he, he would do it if, if, uh, he, we needed him to be moved up. Uh, on Jacob Posey, he has just been placed on the board as an alternate. Now, he has already had to come in, I think, the very next meeting. He served as a full board member because they didn't have quite enough of the full board members to vote. Um, I don't know if he's out of town, but I'm assuming he would be willing to move up to the full board position. Uh, that would leave, that would, if you move those both up, you would have two alternate positions still open, uh, for someone to come in later. On the zoning board of adjustments, as you said, um, Mr. Merz has put his, uh, application in. Um, he's not served on any board yet, but there's always a start. And so his will be considered next time. Uh, there is three positions open. Uh, Bob Lee has already said he would not be resubmitting, as did Diane Crump, Kion. I can't say her name correctly, uh, that owns the flower shop. And so she wasn't going to come back on. Uh, I had one other position, uh, BB, um, she works for the board, or I'm sorry, the bank. She has not resubmitted, and I haven't heard back from her. So that gives me three full board positions open. I do have, uh, Robbie, uh, I think it's Klecker. I'm not sure how to say his last name.
Klecker.
Klecker. He is an alternate member. Uh, his position is up. Marcus Quintez is a alternate, but I reached out. He said he would be willing to go to the full board position. Uh, I'm not saying Mr. Robbie would not be one. He has not attended any of my meetings yet. So I, I might suggest leaving him as an alternate, uh, and maybe he will come to some, so he can kind of see how the board works. Um, cause this board is very, you know, it's a quasi-board. And so they really need to, uh, have, you know, either some knowledge of the city or, you know, how it works, you know, maybe. So I, at this time, you know, if, out of all these, uh, if you wish to move Marcus up, uh, he served several times as a full board member for this board. And he's already on the park board, so he, and he's very familiar with the city.
He complained a little bit about not being appointed to the full board last time.
Well, that, and, and I think his, his goal was maybe the planning and zoning, but you can't be on both. You can't be on the, they, they, uh, you have to be on one or the other on those two boards.
So I think that what we're talking, I want to go back and just, um, reiterate my stance on this, my position with this, is that we need to have people that are active, uh, participating, cooperative. Uh, they don't all have to believe the same things. It's great to have the diversity of thought and different perspectives on it. But it has to be, uh, people that will actually contribute it and not detractors. And so I think that, um, especially with some of the, the more active boards, it's crucial that we get, um, get that feedback from the board, uh, chairs and for you to really think about who's actually being on the board. I, I would rather leave a board position open than fill it with somebody that's going to cause issues with it. It kind of defeats the purpose of having this, this board. I think the boards and the commissions are imperative in reaching out and getting the voice of the community. So I fully support them, but I want to make sure that we're, we're doing that correctly. So I-
No, I was just going to say, uh, when you was talking about leaving the boards open, if there is a meeting called, I'll say, for example, the zoning board of adjustments, the current members, if they can't, if you don't have enough members to make that particular board, the five members for them to hear, uh, they are, I guess it'd be like the council, they're still on that position until you fill out a position. Uh, so if worst came to worst, I mean, you would still call the previous member up and ask them to come in and tell who finds someone to serve, so.
Right. Okay. So I think that what you said, the recommendation is, um, keeping Brad Lauderdale, Matthew Ewald, uh, as full board members, reappointing them, uh, and then moving Carlos Deleon to-
He's currently the alternate position.
Oh, leave him in the alternate position?
Yeah, they're, they're all the same.
Okay, so reappoint all of them. Um, reappoint the two that are on here from the library advisory board.
Correct.
Same thing with the parks board. Uh, leave the two current, uh, reappoint them with, uh, the planning and zoning, planning and zoning. Uh, reappoint Priscilla. Uh, and then move Jeff and Jacob into full board positions?
That's, that's y'all's option.
I don't know that Jacob has agreed to that. I see.
I did reach out to him. I have not heard back from him. I, and if you wish to hold that position open, you can until I reach out to him, because I do know he did have to step in the first meeting he came to, because he did come as an alternate, uh, to, to come to that board, I guess, to hear the-
And I think that he would, if, when we appointed him, uh, he was willing to step up to the full board, so I would be comfortable with appointing him as the full board member.
And when I reach out to him to let him know how they have been selected, uh, if for some reason he comes back and says, no, I'd rather stay as an alternate, uh, I can, I can watch on.
Perfect. I would not expect that, but that's good. Uh, and then on the zoning board of adjustment, um, I think, uh, the recommendation was to leave Robbie Klecker on as the alternate until, um, he starts showing up, uh, and then move Marcus into the, uh, the full board position.
To one of the full board. That still leaves us two open. Uh, and of course, you'll consider, uh, Mr. Merz next time. And we may have another one coming in. Uh, I have reached out to him.
Do I have a motion on that?
Some moved.
Great.
Question.
Sure.
On the library board, you don't show Amanda on your listing.
Correct. Her term is not up yet.
Oh, yes, you only listed, I, I think it'll be more clear next time if we, uh, list them all out, but, but I think this is-
Well, and I was going to say, on the backup, as your backup, you also have the boards itself with their, with their applications and who's on the full board at this time. And, uh, Amanda's there. Is she there? Okay.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you all. Uh, next item is, uh, discussion and possible action on extending the membership areas to, um, membership area to counties contiguous to Medina County specifically for the library advisory board. Because the library advisory board is serving a, a wider area, and, um, it's, it's really important that we get participation in that. I think that we can pick up, uh, a little bit more involvement with that. Um, so I would recommend that we approve that to, um, to extend to Medina County and contiguous counties.
And if y'all do so choose, I'll bring in ordinance back next time.
Perfect. Does anybody have any issues with that?
I don't think there's a downside to that.
No? Okay. Uh, do I have a motion then?
Some moved.
Great.
One second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is discussion and, uh, possible action on implementing, or implementation date for increase of fees related to refuse collection services. Scott?
Yeah, so I mentioned this a little bit earlier. Um, we've been, we talked about this last meeting. It wasn't a action item because there was no action being taken pursuant to the contract with waste management. They have the, uh, ability to increase their fees, uh, in, uh, in response to increases in inflation and fuel costs, which they have done. They've exercised that ability and informed us that, that there will be a fee increase of thirteen percent effective July first. So we've already been getting those bills. Um, the council has the decision whether or not to, uh, make that uh, fee increase, uh, immediate as far as passing it on to the customers, or waiting until when we would normally make our fee changes, which is, uh, and really, you set the effective date for those fee changes as well. They don't necessarily have to be effective October first, January first, et cetera. So I wanted to put this before the council to see whether or not you, there was any interest in bringing it back. You can't make that decision tonight anyway. We can bring it back at the next council meeting with an ordinance if you want to go ahead and change or update the, uh, solid waste fee. Or, uh, if you'd rather, we can wait and update the solid waste fee with all of the other fee changes that will take place on September twenty-sixth, or the last meeting of September.
I imagine that's a pretty significant delta between what we're collecting and what we're paying.
No, well, um,
Thirteen percent?
So, yeah, it's thirteen percent, right? Uh, but when we looked at our, uh, current revenue and current expenditures for solid waste, um, we just won't be as profitable. If, if we eat that cost for the, until, if we, let's say you adopt the rates in September, make them effective for October, um, we can afford to eat the rate between now and then. I say afford to, it just means, yeah, basically, July, August, well, three, three months, July, August, September.
So the, I think that the, the item to, to decide on is we are, we are getting these fees. It was given to us. I don't like the way that they did it. I would like to get notice from them instead of just popping up. Um, did we look at the contract to see, um, what, if any limitation on their ability to do this again? I would expect them to be good partners, um, but my, my concern is-
They acted within the, they acted within the contrayer of the contract. They didn't breach that. And they did give us some notice, and the issue, they did delay it some too. I mean, to, I guess, to their credit, to a certain extent, they could have made it effective, I couldn't remember when, it was April or May. And, um, they pushed it off as late, uh, our rep worked with his bosses and, and pushed it off for as long as it possibly could. What we're working on doing is amending the contract to, uh, make it so that in the future, these have to be done in concert with our, with our budget.
Right.
And the adoption of our rates. Uh, so we are working on making that change, uh, official with, with the, uh, contract amendment. And that'll be a, a separate discussion. It'll happen on another day when I think Cindy and I put our heads together with waste management and maybe had some more negotiations back and forth with them. Um, but yeah, and answer your question, one, well, and one of your concerns, they actually- But yeah, and answer your question, one, well, one of your concerns, they actually did give us some notice that this was possible. And my response was, well, we don't want to pay it, see what you can do to delay it, and so you did. But then he kind of, he got a pretty strong answer back from corporate saying, no, 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 that's, like, you've already waited too long, you need to send that notice and make it effective immediately, which is why it seemed like we had a short period of time, because he, I think he thought he was going to be able to get it delayed until August or September.
Okay. So we have a real cost.
Well, I think that the city absorbing that difference for a period of time may strengthen our position and our future negotiations, like, you know, showing that that cost us as a city that didn't, it wasn't our customers that paid it, it was the city that paid it.
Well, it is the customers that pay it ultimately, because whatever, because we're not a for-profit, and so anything that we don't do, that means that that's, that's money that we're not collecting to cover the services.
But it wasn't budgeted.
But it wasn't budgeted. I don't, what's the total amount, the total delta amount on that?
I'm sorry, I don't have a figure. Yeah, I mean, I honestly, I don't remember, I know he showed it to me once before, they ran that math while you and I were out of town, and that was a conversation I just had on my phone, because he was asking, can we leave this on the agenda or not? And I said, we leave it on as a discussion item, and let's put it on for deliberation at a future meeting, if they want to do that. I don't, I didn't feel comfortable with the staff making that decision, which is why I put it on the agenda for you all to think about and decide on.
Make up a CPI out of...
Right.
And like fuel in 2021, fuel in 2022, that average health point here of 2021, towards kind of native contract, because it's a limited contract for a year.
Well, there's other items related, no, under the new contract? Yeah, I think actually you had, you've only been under it maybe a year? And it's a five-year contract?
Right, so they, so they can escalate the...
Well, it's been almost two years, because it was done before you got here.
It was, that's right, I've been here over a year and a half, so.
Can I make a comment? I think this is symptomatic of a problem we're going to see many more times. And I think that the bill that the Congress passed and gave us money for was intended to be used for things like this, to help the city overcome the economic problems that were caused in the last two years. And I think we should be mindful of that, and you already, I think you mentioned earlier that you were not going to spend all that money at the first year, you were going to try to save at least half of it. And I think that's very prudent, and I think this is the kind of problem that we're going to see many more times in the next six months, and we may have to use some of that money to go back and cover these things. That's what that money was intended to do, instead of passing it on as a hardship to the consumer, and then at the next billing cycle, we fix it, the next budget, we correct it for the next year, and then the consumer has to pick it up. But I don't like the idea of just ignoring it, but I do like the idea of, of quantifying it and understanding what the cost would be if we don't pass it on until the next budget. And then we take that up as an issue when we do, when we're, how are we going to spend that money they gave us?
So I know the staff, again, the reason it's on the agenda is the staff was prepared to just wait and do this as part of our fee adjustment, but again, I felt like the council knew, make that decision, but, but the reason staff was comfortable doing that is because once we, and I apologize, I just don't remember the amount, but where that amount is, we already have an administrative fee that we charge over and above what they charge us, right? We collect a small administrative fee, it's not a lot, but over the course of the year, those, those months paying 13% additional just for two months or two and a half, whatever that is, will still end up being slightly positive for the year. So we will still turn a quote unquote profit, we'll still cover, we'll still have, I think it worked out to about 2% of admin fee that we have collected the entire year. So I guess staff recommendation was, let's put this off until we do the fee change and the fee adjustments in September. And unfortunately, it is a fairly significant increase, but we can afford, afford to eat it for these couple of months without passing that hardship, hardship off immediately. But the problem is, it really is kicking the can down the road, it's going to be passed off eventually.
Well, I think the biggest problem here is that of communication. I don't like surprising people with that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So I think that, and I'll defer to council's decision on this, but I think it's best to, to bring forth that as a, an ordinance change with that, with that dollar amount, or, I'm sorry, bring back that dollar amount without making an ordinance change right now, assuming that we will eat it, but we, we should understand what that looks like. Or maybe bring the ordinance change and tell us what that will be, and we can, if we want to implement it at that time, if the delta is too much and it's going to impact the budget too much, then we'll just deny the budget.
Well, I've already told you, it's not going to impact the budget, you're going to have a little bit less revenue.
Right, that impacts a lot.
Well, we're already anticipating stronger, we're going to contribute money to the fund balance and the utility fund and the...
I, I have a feeling that we will, I have a feeling that we probably should just eat that for the rest of it, just because we're surprising somebody with it, but I think put it together as an ordinance for the change and that, and bring back the actual dollar amount, so if it's more than what we expected, then we can, we have that option of doing it. But understanding that I think that what council will say is, let's absorb that into the CARES Act funding. Is that...
I don't know. Maybe one thing I would ask, and by the way, I'm just, you signed, you signed a contract for a lot of money, so you could have done this before.
Right.
And you had, so you say you're looking for prior, so we're a year behind, so in that respect, it's kind of not my life, but I'd like to drive, but let's...
I can actually, if you, oh, I can tell you what the amount is. I just realized, I've got it on the last budget, it's in the last, it'll be in that same folder I showed you earlier, where we estimate, because I think, I want to say it's like $3,000 or $60,000 for the year in revenues for solid waste, something like that. I'll roll it up in a second, but it's not a lot. So our, our refuse department, our total, so, yeah, our total spend for 2021 was $491,200. And our approved for 2022 is $524,000. So if you figure 524, just using back, the map to the math, divided by 12, that's $43,666 a month, just on average, so roughly, we'll call it $44,000.
So it's $14,000?
Yeah, roughly, right.
That's two and a half months.
So, yeah, $44,000 times 0.13, $5,700, so 15 grand, 16 grand.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, I, we, I know that it's not, it's not going to break our budget, but that's not the issue. It really comes down to principle, do we pass it on now or do we wait, pass it on later? Either way, we're going to pass it on. The good news, the reason that I think staff's also recommending waiting is because it allows us to get it in newsletters, do some...
The website, everything, yeah.
Does anybody have an, an issue with just covering that $15,000, whatever it is?
No.
Okay. And then let's get the communication out, and that way we'll just include it in the next...
That's about $70,000.
Right.
And I, I think that the point councilman, Dyer, made is, is relevant, especially if we start talking about the CIP. If our borrowing ability drops and our cost of doing business increases, the ARPA funds, limited though they may be, their real impact is going to be to allow us to do more than what we would have been able to do otherwise. And that's essentially what you're saying, I think they cover, they're the, the buddy that covers the holes that are going to come about, they're going to...
That would be a legitimate use of the money.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. You good? You ready to move on?
Yes, there was no action on that item.
Just wanted to make sure you had clear direction. Next item is discussion on authorizing the use of fund balance expenditures for police department equipment, including radios and computer server, police department building roof replacement. Are you okay if I talk to this?
I would love for you to talk to this.
Okay. So I actually removed the, what's that? Well, this was discussion and appropriate action. I took off the appropriate action because I didn't feel like we had enough detail to be able to cover that. So as I talked to, I sat down and talked to the chief for quite some time to understand what he was looking for. So when he was talking about radios, I wanted to make sure that the radios were interoperable with the county and with the ESD, and he had looked at that already. The radios that he's talking about, they are not just compatible with it, but they also, he's recommending that we go with the same ones that they're using, which will actually choose the best signal, like if they're going from tower to tower, it chooses the best signal, not the one that they're already on. So the ones that they have currently, they'll find dead zones as, if they, it'll wait until it totally drops, they might have a really bad signal before it picks up on, on the other one. And I think that that communication thing in law enforcement is enormous. We did talk about, so I, I think that the fund commitment on that would be a good idea, and he'll bring that back with more details, but then also looking at, with the existing radios, we have other radios, he's checking into how we can leverage that for, if we do lose communications, what are the key areas that we need to have radio communications? Can they talk to each other, not on the emergency channel, but on a separate channel? So he's going to look into some of that stuff. I just wanted to make sure that, that we're looking at things holistically, not these piece parts, and so he was fully on board with that. On the, the computer server, so there were a couple of things that were looked at, there were, there were some anecdotal details that they got on it. So what they were, what he was comparing it against was, we have an existing server that is, it's been end of life since 2015, and it should have been replaced back in 2015. If you guys were here before, you remember that, it was pulled off of the budget in that, that big culling. So it has been an outstanding need, it does need to get covered, but my point with that is that if you lose that, if you lose that one server, I mean, you have to have it raid or raid, raid or raid? So you have to build a lot of redundancy in that so that you don't lose a single hard drive, which is the most common failure in, in servers. So you have to build a lot of extra money into that, but you still have the same risk of it's still in the same place. And so what I was suggesting is that we look at additional items like cloud services, and he came back and said, well, he got an, an answer back that it, it increased our monthly, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but it increased our annual recurring fees up to like, I don't know, $30,000 a year, just recurring fees for doing something like that. But what he wasn't looking at, which I wish that our IT service provider would give us more details on this, he was looking at a managed service, and those always are going to cost more. What I suggested we look at is, holistically, let's take a look at part of the, the IT RFP that's going out, look at it not as a managed service, but as a cloud storage with a local service.
And I just now understood that. I know about all that, but when you were explaining earlier, I don't know, I was fully understanding that, right? It fully makes sense now.
And councilman Dyer?
I read the draft RFP that, I don't know if you have time yet since you've been back, probably not.
No, I'm the sheriff, the mayor's...
They sent it in as they said they would, and I read it, and, and they, I think they put a lot of information in. My concern is, if we use what they have given us for a recompete, if we do that...
Well, I understand the agenda item is talking specifically about...
Yeah, but on the servers.
The police.
The server, the police server's in there.
Right.
And my concern about the police server is that they're adding a record management system, which is new, new software, in-code software, which means a new database, which means we have to come up with either Azure or, as you pointed out, we got to come up with a strategy for how we're going to protect our data. And it's symptomatic of many other problems that are in that RFP. And what I think needs to happen is Scott needs to have enough time to review it.
Yes.
And we probably need to have some discussions with those that are interested, but the bottom line is, our cost for IT is going to go up dramatically, including the police department. It's going to go up based on my read of this.
And, and I'm going to keep this discussion really tight. We will go into that, totally agree with you, but for this discussion specifically, I just asked him to go back, because he hadn't gotten it fully baked, he hadn't looked at all the options, and I want to make sure that anything like this, we are really looking at what all the options are, leveraging our experts, and I really wish that our experts would lean in on this and help us out better with this, so glad that we're going out to RFP.
What we're missing is, we're missing a policy for IT, that's what we're really missing.
Right.
We don't have a, a vision for the city that we can translate into contracts.
Right.
And I agree with you, we really need to spend a little bit of time focusing on that and get, get the policy part understood. Are we going to back up our stuff ourselves, are we going to use the cloud, are we going to use Azure, are we going to use somebody else? There's all kinds of things that we could establish in policy that would then drive the solutions that...
Yeah, we were just, it's funny, because we were just talking about that, her, about, about some of the other items that were supposed to be on this agenda and then came off for the same reasons, because the cities, while we have some plans, the plans are made absent a policy. And so now, when we're bringing them forward, in light of all the discussion, strategic discussion we've had as a council, there's some policy missing. So I, I 100% agree with you, I think that's a great idea. So the, the RFP will be on the next agenda.
Great. So the other, and I just wanted to give you kind of full context with that, he's also looking at the, the Tyler system.
You keep saying he, but you're talking about Jim Kohler, our new police chief.
So he was, Jim was talking about the, the county, and I think it's...
RMS, Record Management System.
Yeah, but they're using Tyler.
Yeah.
And what he was looking at is incorporating the same one, so he's actually looking at spending more for a record management system. There are some limitations right now that are actually, could cause us some pretty serious issues because of the limitations, and so I, I think it's a good thing to look at. I think that's a wise expenditure, but he's doing it for a reason, so.
Well, the ongoing, right now, at least with what he's looked at so far, the ongoing maintenance costs are actually less than we're spending currently. It costs quite a bit upfront, but it's kind of one-time expense, but to your point, maybe we haven't addressed all the ongoing costs, and maybe we need to look at those a little closer.
Yeah. I, I just want to be really careful about this. The other thing he was looking at is the ticket writing system or the, the printers, trying to look at different options for either like iPads or traditional print. So he's, he's going back through that, he's going to come back to us, but I wanted to make sure that we are, that you're aware of what he's looking at. He would talk to that, but he couldn't make it to me. So then the last item is on the, the police department building roof replacement. So this is something that we've known about for a long time. He is bringing back multiple options of doing, I think it was a 10-year roof and a 20-year roof, correct? So, and I want to be, I want to be careful about keeping this discussion very closely related to this agenda item, so let's not expand or have further discussion, but I'm going to drop a little C grenade, whatever you want to call it. The PD is the very, it's the, the first area that we're going to have to expand as the city grows. We're going to have to add staff to the police department. One of the things that we went after when we were up in DC is, we've submitted application for a grant for three additional officers to see if we can get additional funding to cover those officers in the, the time between where we start growing and need them and where we actually derive tax revenue to be able to pay for them. So this is a bridge grant that would help us out tremendously, but it, it goes to show that our police department is growing. We know that it's going to have to move, we have identified some areas where it could move to, and so I just want to lob this out and have you think about, do, how much, we have, I, I believe that we have to do the roof repair no matter what, but think about, does it make more sense to put this out to a creative RFP for the PD? The PD, long-term, will be much more efficient... The PD, long-term, will be much more efficient being out where we discussed before with Chief Cook was by the, on the corner, the northwest corner of the airport property. That's where, that was the one that he had preferred, correct?
Of the merger of the ESD, the combined roof building.
Yeah. So, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to get this back on the tax rolls, put it out to an RFP, find the highest and best use that somebody will actually do with this. What will they invest? What will they do with it? They're not going to turn it into a parking lot. It's just going to sit there and create more issues for us. But what would they actually do? What is the total investment? And we can look at the tax revenue that would be derived. So, I think that that's something before we go, like if we had the option to do a five-year roof or a 10-year roof or a 20-year roof, I think we need to look at patching it right now because I don't think that that building has long-term viability as a city, as a city office. And scene? And scene.
I'm just saying that you just shared everything you shared with me. We've covered the topic. We don't want to expand on that, on what you just shared.
Okay. And that's it. Okay. So, those are the items. Thank you for keeping me on trap, on track. All right, next item. Discussion and appropriate action on approving a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a collection contract for fines, fees, restitution, other debts, and costs, providing split fees on partial collections by authorizing a collection fee in the amount of 30% to defray cost of collection, collecting delinquent fines, fees, court costs, and other debts over 60 days past due pursuant to Article 103.0031 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. It's a very long item.
Yes. And so, everything you just read is by state statute, as you might imagine. No offense to our current attorney, but that's how all this stuff gets developed. So, we have this, the next, this item and the next two items that are all related to the same thing. It's just the hiring of Leinberger. You already said, you basically accepted their proposal, but that's all we did that night. We had to do some postings and publishings, et cetera, to meet the legal requirement to be actually be able to hire them. These next three items accomplish that. Once we're done with these three items, we will have effectively hired them to be our collector of court fines and fees, as well as utilities are coming later. Yeah. So, we look at utilities, the amount of past due, et cetera. It's not, plus looking at our revenues, they're not as big a concern frankly, as the court fines and fees. So, we'll take care of utilities eventually, but, but this takes care of our court.
We just need to pass this resolution. That does all three of those?
No, no, there'll be three items. There's this item, then the next, and then the final item might actually be approving the agreement.
They provide this form. There is a statement on our bulletin board which is supposed to be put out to the legal, sorry, is on the bulletin board and on the website, and that was part of what we had to do to follow the state law. The first one is a resolution on, of course, defraying the cost. And the second one is also a resolution on the action. And then the third one is their agreement in itself.
Great. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman King made a motion and Councilwoman Martinez seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Discussion and appropriate action on approving a resolution on action required under Texas Government Code 2254 for the City of Casterville to provide a written statement and finding of the need for specialized contingent fee legal services. Do you have a motion on that?
I have a motion for a red.
Do you have a second?
Aye.
Motion by Councilman King, seconded by Councilman Carey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, discussion and appropriate action on approving an agreement with Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson, LLP, and the City of Casterville for the collection of delinquent court fines and fees. Do I have a motion?
I have to make a motion to approve this.
All right, quick draw. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think Paul Beechey by nose. If I may say real quick before you pass the motion, just kudos to Debra going through the agreement. There's a couple of items that they had verbally agreed to, but were not in the agreement. She ensured through our attorney and, I guess they're all attorneys over there, that language got included and that's been highlighted in your agreement. So, thank you, Debra, for your eagle eyes.
We want to get all the money we can get.
So, what was changing here then?
So, there are two items. One, they said that they agreed to pay for, pay for the encode module, but then that wasn't really worried in the agreement that way. We weren't concerned they weren't going to do it, but we want to make sure it's in the agreement. And then the other item is that if, it's over four years or three years?
After 2003, I think it is. No, that, that's the.
No, there's certain, there's certain debts that if they're older than a certain amount of time, they don't charge a fee for that. They collected it, but they don't charge, they just, we get to keep 100% of that fee. And so, that wasn't in the contract and she made sure that got included as well.
Okay. Are there, have we reviewed this for any other weird surprises, kind of like what we had with waste management?
No, because they can't go up on us. Unless they collect it, they don't get paid.
Yeah.
Yes. She looked at it.
Great. Thank you. All right, so who actually seconded that?
Mr. Carey, I think.
Okay.
Ms. Martinez was louder, but apparently Scott said that he.
By nose.
Photo finish. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman King, a second by Councilman Carey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They were all opposed. Motion passes. Okay, next item is staff reports. Scott, take your way.
Yeah, see, I will ask you if any questions. I do want to point out a couple of things. I don't know if you saw the Chuck Norris quote. I'm not going to tell you where it is if you can find it. You have to go look for it. It's in the airport report. The community development report, I believe, is different than I've seen in the past. So, it's a new format. I was very pleased with the format of the report, but what I think doesn't matter that much as what y'all think. This is the reports for you to read and consume. So, I wanted to call your attention to that. And then if you, beyond that, if you had any questions or concerns about what's in the report. I did have a question from Councilman Dyer earlier today about some of the items that were reported on in Public Works' report that had to do with development, just kind of ongoing development. And one thing, just as a reminder to both him and you, these reports are intended to be, they're basically a month late because they're, they're reporting on, here we are in July, 2nd meeting in July, and they're actually reporting on what took place in New York. So, or no, 1st meeting in July. So, they can be a little, the information can be a little bit dated. And so, some of the items that were in that report were a little bit dated. But just to, just to confirm, and some of the concerns were, you know, are we actually late? What's going on with these developments? And the short answer is yes, you know, they're behind. The Yantis and the other contractors associated with the Alstician Oaks Development made some mistakes along the way, and that has caused some delays. And that's part of the change order that we had with Rock and Q for the water line. It had to be delayed because the sewer line wasn't finished. And the sewer line hasn't passed some of its tests. And so, they're going to have to make improvements to make sure that it passes. And so, all those things are being done and we, but we're in close contact, as you can imagine, in communication with, you know, our engineers and our inspectors and their engineers and their inspectors, and of course, the developer, to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as what's expected and what's going to be delivered. And right now, we're, yeah, we're a little behind schedule, but nobody's screaming. It's kind of par for the course for developments of this nature, so.
Did you have any further questions about that, or are you satisfied with my answer?
Well, I do have a couple of questions, but I appreciate you answering my questions. I gave them to you late today.
Well, and that was John. I hadn't even read the report yet, so.
I guess the comment I'd make, rather than taking the issue directly, going through the nine items, it just seems to me we could be a little more direct in the answer. You know, for example, you answered the question on the first one. They're testing all three units. The testing was completed and we are reviewing the results. That doesn't tell me whether you accepted it or not.
Right.
And what I want to know is, did we accept the work or did we reject the work?
Well, that, so that decision hasn't been made yet.
See, I don't know the answer.
That's because we don't know the answer either.
Okay. Well, and that means we're behind. We can't be on schedule if we, if we pass the time for the test and we don't know the results. It's kind of the general situation with all of these things. They're very complicated.
So, I, I agree with the communications, the need for concise but thorough communications when we're getting clarity. Thank you.
Now, see, the pictures are great. The pictures are great, but there's absolutely no explanation in the report what the picture's trying to convey to me. It's a pretty nice picture of a manhole. What am I supposed to get out of it? Is it a good manhole or is it a bad manhole? And I don't get that.
Well, I would ask, I mean, I, okay, so I'll just, I would ask, is the, is the reporting even net? Like, how much detail do you need for a policymaking decision? There's no policies related to this.
The only thing I want to know is, is there been a failure on the part of the contractor to meet his requirement?
But, which there hasn't.
So, well, my, my question is, like, we give you a lot of detailed reports, but in this case, even though it's, it's good that he has this, it's kind of reporting on what, on the activity, if you will, of our inspector. And I guess maybe the value that the policymaker gets out of this is, given the fact that we've had issues with prior contractors who are doing work like this, this conveys hopefully and builds trust in the policymakers that, hey, your staff is, and their inspectors are watching this and catching issues and not, and making sure that this is going to get done right. That's kind of the takeaway, but my, but on the other, on the side, other side of things as far as the policy is concerned, well, really, is it, is the city doing what it agreed to do with developer? Are they doing what they agreed to? And that's a, that's a very, that's a quick and short answer, right? Yes. They're delayed, they're behind schedule, but is that, how does that impact you as a policymaker? There's really nothing you can do about it. There's nothing we can do about it. We're doing what we're supposed to do, you know?
I think from a policymaker, it is making sure, I think in short order with that, like specifically with Alstician Oaks, it is ensuring that we are not holding them up, that we're doing our jobs. And so, if.
But we are holding them up if we're, if we're doing, you know what I'm saying?
No, you're misunderstanding me. What I'm saying is, are we causing unnecessary delays? Are we just not responding? Or is it being delayed because of things that are outside of our control? So, I think that that, to Councilman Dyer's point, is we want to know that, that our staff is doing what they need to keep things on track. And I think it's the same thing with everything else. It's the same thing with waste management. Is staff doing the job that we need to do to deliver the results that we're expected to deliver? So, I think that the reports across the board, they're getting better. They're not there. There's some inconsistencies in them. I think that, like, with the way that, that we're approaching it, it's got to be a lot more, if there's a graphic on here, there's got to be a reason for it. Otherwise, it becomes clutter. When you look at the, some of the stuff that was put, like the activity report, I think, like Brianna's with the projects, I think this is really descriptive. It demonstrates a whole lot of stuff, but when you get to code enforcement, it's just like a splatting down of a bunch of tables that don't really have any decent, kind of like actionable, I can't tell if we're doing our job here or not. We have open cases, but we don't have closed cases. We don't have.
They do.
Open cases up on, no, the, the graphic up on the top?
Oh, on, okay.
It says open cases in May and June. It doesn't say how many of those are closed, how many of those are outstanding. And it doesn't show what action they're taking. I can't keep that, okay, erase her on there. And it doesn't show, so this is a much less informative report that could be a lot better. When you look at, like, what happened with.
Well, so she has a table below it that shows when the case was opened.
Well, we can continue to work on that, but it, it just.
And the date closed, so.
Do you want to go to detail now, or we can do that offline maybe?
Well, you, you definitely have some opinions that you can share with me. I know you and I see each other every day. Is anybody else on the council that has, give any feedback on the reports that they'd like to add?
On her report, it'd be nice if it was real easy, but it's just a hack that just kind of showed you.
Okay.
So, she gives me the address, but I guess, and I guess I just, what I had to do, I just have to look at the address. I guess, you're not the only one saying that all this is.
Well, and we don't, this is, we have things for May and June, but we're almost already through July.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's the date. I wanted y'all to make sure you understand, when these are prepared, they're prepared for the month prior, to be delivered at the first meeting. And that's just, that's just a logistical issue. Like, we can't give you July data at the first meeting in July. We're going to give it to you at the first meeting in August.
It's acceptable. You could, but it's acceptable to do it like that. But I think that there's just, it, our job as.
You could. What do you mean you could?
You have a running month to date.
But it's the Wednesday prior to the meeting starts. So, sometimes you can't, because the Wednesday prior is the last day of the month prior. I mean, it depends. Yeah, it depends. Yeah, anyway.
So, I think that overall, we're getting better. We're not quite there. Our job as policymakers is to understand that we're actually doing what we as a city, city staff, our policies are set up to deliver the, what, what the people expect out of this. And so, I think that, like, with Public Works, it shows an activity report, but it doesn't give you anything actionable. It doesn't talk about the budget process. It doesn't say where we are with some of the items there. So, I think that we can work on getting better detail. Like, on another example, on the airport, again, great detail, but when you look at, you have different graphs. One shows arrivals and departures, and this is how long? This is for the month? And it has individual items, so you don't know.
I'm realizing as the longer you talk, that, you know, really, and truthfully, where this is going to tie back into is you and me and Sheena, when we sit down and look at the balance scorecard and develop those measures, that is going to identify for every single department, whether it's a financial measure, and we'll actually be establishing for the benefit of the entire council, a metric that's, that'll be consistent no matter what department you're looking at. You're going to look at revenues from here, expenditures.
You're looking at the measurements in your key results? And that's what we should.
Yeah, so I apologize, because I think that's really the.
Well, you said it really well. That was very clear and concise to his point of what we need.
It all leads into tying into that.
So, we need to have that discussion soon, because I, one of the other things that's out there in your folders, it is, when you go back and look at the retreats, is a report from Ron Cox that's, it's a summary report of our strategic planning. So, and that's what you and the three of us are going to use to look at the balance scorecard.
Cool. Great. Any other discussion on, or questions about the report? All right. Cool. Thank you. Good discussion. Last item, discussion on new format for agenda item submission. So, I think that everything that we're doing is going to lead us down to, to that balance